Good evening. If I could have your attention, please, we are going to begin now. I'd like to call to order this, the public hearing on the town of Wallingford fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marrone.
Here.
Morgenstein. Chortel. Testa. Sandri.
Here.
And Chairman Savani.
Here. Councilor Chortel is attending a family funeral out of state, and Councilors Morgenstein and Testa both had work obligations that detained them. They will be here late. Mayor, would you like to open?
Yes, just a couple of comments. I thank everyone for being here this evening. It's an important occasion, and we have major decisions to make with regard to the money that will fund the services in this community for the coming year. I just want to paint a backdrop. So we have a grand list that establishes the basis for taxation. It's the 2018 grand list. The grand list increased 1.19%. That's $1.4 million at the current mill rate. So that's new money, $1.4 million. The requests, and this includes all departments other than utilities, because the utilities are funded by rates, the requests totaled $7.3 million. You can see the gap. $7.3 million in requests, $1.4 million in what we see as an increase in revenue at the current mill rate. I can truthfully say there's no department that requests anything that's pure fluff, something that's unnecessary from their standpoint, just trying to find some way to spend money. I don't think that's true. However, clearly, there's a gap there that the public cannot afford. So we go through the budget. The governor's budget, so this adds to our woes, the governor's budget decreases our education cost sharing grant by around $500,000. The governor's budget also requests an increase of $400,000 to contribute toward teachers' pensions. There's $900,000 right there of either lost or a demand for more revenue. A recent bond sale resulted in the town being downgraded from AAA to AA1 in large measure because of our use of reserves as we responded to reductions in revenue. One was Bristol Myers Squibb leaving the community, and the other was reducing state grants by about $1,500,000. Residents and businesses are faced with a major increase in sewer use rates. It may happen sooner, maybe a little later, but right now, it is coming. Removal of phosphorus, which is not a public health issue, not a public safety issue, removing phosphorus from sewer effluent. For the average residential homeowner, that will be an additional $150 annually. For a business, it will amount to up to $4,000 in additional cost. We have major concerns at the state level, as you're aware. In fact, Wednesday night, there was a hearing here, not a hearing, but a meeting regarding the toll issue. The state of Connecticut is actively seeking more revenue to be able to handle their demands and needs. In the past two to three years, our utilities have seen either a decline in usage or static. So whether it's water, sewer, or electric, either the demand has declined or it remains static. That means that any increase needed by those utilities means a rate increase. So across the board, there is continued and beyond any expectation pressure on revenue, more money in order to do what we're doing today. So it immediately puts on the table, maybe we can't do everything we're doing today. So this proposed budget requests a 0.55 mill increase, 1.9%, and would result in the average homeowner on an average assessed property, residential property, of about $101. We are trying to respond to the backdrop, the way the stage is set, but we're also conscious of a need to provide the services that our citizens and businesses rely upon. So again, I thank all of you for being here. No one is in a special place. We all share the same problems, and it's only with working together that we're going to get through this. I don't expect that the pressures we're feeling now are going to end in the near term. I think they're with us for the long term, and we need to, every day, every week, every month, every year, do some real soul searching about what is essential and what might not be so essential. So with those comments, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll sit down.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Wallingford residents, department heads. I'm going to review with you how this evening will proceed. This is for all of us, so please be patient with me. This is a public hearing on the budget. The town council will not be answering questions tonight. The council is here to listen to you tonight. Departments are here to answer questions with regard to their budgets for the next fiscal year 2019-2020. I will read a list of the departments. Everyone, please listen for your department. Residents, if you wish to ask a budget-related question of a department, when you hear that department called, please signal to me, and that department will remain. Just kindly raise your hand. At the end of the department roll call, I will ask the public if they did not hear a department called. I'm going to ask all department heads to stay here until we excuse you. We'd like to accommodate latecomers if reasonably. Thirty to 45 minutes into the meeting, I'll do a final call of the department list. Following the final call, if there have been no responses at all for a department, we will excuse that department head for the evening. We will call departments to the panel table. We'll call on questioners alternately from each side of the auditorium until there are no more questioners. So what you'll do is, if you have questions, please line up at one of the two microphones on either side. I'm going to change the order a bit this year in fairness to those department heads who have sat impatiently, waited for their name to come up in alphabetical order by department. The department with the least questions will go first. The department with the most questioners will go last. When you have been called forward to ask your questions, please speak your name and your address slowly and clearly into the microphone so that it may be heard and correctly recorded for the record. Please do not call out anything from the auditorium. Please do come forward and wait your turn at the microphone. Please state your questions clearly, and please be considerate of others with your time. In fairness to those who have questions, we'd like to keep the meeting moving forward. So with that, I am going to now call the departments by name in alphabetical order. First is the animal control or the dog pound. Second, Board of Assessment Appeals. Board of Education. Is it possible that I only see one hand for the Board of Education? Okay. Board of Ethics. Building Department. Cafeteria. Capital Appropriations Reserve and Force. Capital and Non-Recurring. Capital and Non-Recurring Fund. Conservation Commission. Contingency Account. Debt Service. Economic Development. Electric Division. Emergency Management and Civil Preparedness. Employee Insurance and Other Benefits. Engineering. Finance Department. Fire Department, including EMS. Government Access Television. Health Department. Human Resources and Risk Management. Inland Wetlands. Insurance, Property and Casualty. Law Department. Library. Mayor's Office. These are questions about the budget for running just the mayor's office. Parks and Recreation. Pension Funds. Planning and Zoning. Police Department. Probate Court. Program Planning. Public Utilities Commission. Public Works Department. Register our Voters. Sewer Division. Six-Year Capital Budget. Social Services Contributions. I'm going to go through a list. Fuel Crisis Committee. Wallingford Center Inc. Wallingford Center Inc. Capital. Center Street Cemetery. Literacy Volunteers. Emergency Shelter Columbus House. Public Celebrations Commission or Committee. Quinnipiac River Watershed Association. Wallingford Transit Authority. Subsidy. Region Two Mental Health. Wallingford Center Inc. Facade Improvement Program. John J. Nurdin RTC Camp. Masters Manor. Wallingford Committee on the Aging, which is also the Senior Center. Wallingford Committee on Aging Bus Transport. ARC or Kuhn of Meriden-Wallingford. Wallingford 2020 Committee. Historic Program Matching. SCOW. Town Council. This is the budget for running the town council office. We're stuck here anyway. Town Clerk. You're stuck here anyway. The Utilities, Electric, Water, and Sewer. Veterans Center. Youth and Social Services Bureau. Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I forget, if you are here because you are interested in going to the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that meeting has been moved to room 315. And apparently, those people are already in the right room. All right. We will start calling the... I'm sorry. Got you. Thank you. And we'll start calling those departments. Apparently, there's only one or two people here to ask questions for each department budget. So the budgets that have one person asking questions will go first. If you have two, I'm sorry, you're in the second tier. So the first department that has one question for it is the Board of Education. Nice footwear. Why don't you give him a second to get seated? Mr. Gross, you know the drill.
Yep. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Chair to the council. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi.
I... You know, the budget goes up every year, so I had a couple of questions on the size of the amount of people that you have in the school system. It seems, and maybe I'm wrong, but it seems that you have more administrators than you've had in the past.
That is correct.
Yep. The school system is shrinking in size based on demographics, and so I'm just wondering where we're spending...
Sure. No problem. I can answer that. What we have is, we don't have building-level administration that's been added. We have administration that's been added in the area of curriculum. We've always had the staff, but they've transitioned to administration to address the issues of teacher evaluation that came to the district and came to the state now, going on about seven years ago. The amount of evaluation that has to be done has been increased, and we needed, and this was a goal that the board set forth at that point when we looked at distribution of responsibilities. The issue is that our staff, our administrative staff, prior to adding the administrators, were responsible for evaluating upwards of 40 people, which is tremendous when you talk about the number of times that a teacher needs to be evaluated, as well as non-certified staff, paraeducators, as well as other areas. So the decision that was part of our strategic plan was to move some positions that were in our teachers' union to administrative positions over time using grant funds to help subsidize that cost. So while the administrators have gone up, we've utilized grants that are entitlement grants that come to us every year to help sustain those services rather than putting the whole amount of funding on the town and the taxpayers. These individuals do a lot more than just evaluate. They also help develop curriculum. They procure resources. They plan professional development. So you'll notice that we've been able to reduce in other areas because we have in-house experts now. In some areas, we don't have to go out for additional services that we once had to in the past because we didn't have those experts.
So you've reduced other administration?
Excuse me?
So you've reduced other administration?
We have not been able to do that because we don't have the capacity to do that at a building level. We have reduced in other areas to offset expenditures. So we have reduced in terms of other departments that are not as, well, through attrition predominantly. So we have reduced in those areas. Staffing continues to increase in some areas based on need of students. This year, you'll note in the budget that we do need to increase two teachers, one for our EL population that continues to increase and one for our special education population that continues to increase. We do, when we compare to other districts in our DURG, we are not administratively top-heavy. We actually are in line, if not on the lower end, of those districts, especially we get compared to Milford quite often because we have two high schools like they do. We have less administrative staff than they do.
Bringing up two high schools, is there, I mean, the cost of running two high schools is burdensome to the, I mean, because the enrollment keeps going down. I don't know how much it's gone down over the last 10 years, but it's hundreds and...
Correct.
If not 1,000 students or...
Correct.
Hundreds of students.
Yes. And what we're doing is, in the final stages of preparing, or I shouldn't say "we" are, our outside consultants are in the final stages of preparing a survey for all community members to offer the three options that the Board of Education came to consensus on last week. One would be to do the capital projects that are a part of our strategic plan for the four schools in question, the two middle schools and the two high schools. Another option was to renovate to new all four schools, and the last option was one high school and renovate to new the two middle schools. So that survey will be conducted for all people in the community. We're looking at a massive outreach that we could get at least the standard, industry standard, at least 30%. We'd hopefully get more than that in terms of responses, and then that information will be shared with the town council because it's a long process.
Does the town council get to make the final decision, or you're just advising? Or do you make the, do you say, and I'm just, you take and say, one high school? And they say, no, we don't, we want two high schools. Who has the final say?
Well, who holds the purse?
The mayor.
So there you go.
The town council.
The town council ultimately does. So the Board of Education will provide all the data from the families, from the community that is acquired through the survey, and then we could, all we can do, which is the case with anything, is we can make a recommendation. It's up to those holding the ability to actually fund the projects to make that final decision.
Do you have demographics going forward for the number of students?
Yes.
And they are trending which way?
They're trending down, but much more level than down. I think that's what most districts are seeing in the state of Connecticut and actually throughout the Northeast. So we do have that. That was all part of the initial study. That is part of the information that is on our website, and within the survey, we just received the link to the survey for us to review, my Board of Education central office. And what we're doing is, the link is embedded within the survey so that people can go and look at that demographic data to give them that additional information if they so choose.
Personally, and I know I've spoken to other people, for years, one high school.
No, I...
Just for, you know, you'll be able to offer a better school system with one high school, one middle school too, but that's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gross.
Any other questions for the Board of Education before I...
Good evening. Tammy Raccio, 123 Chimney Hill Road. I just wanted to bring up, there's two bills that are actually proposed in Hartford at the present time, and one of them is on school transportation. And Dr. Menzo, I was wondering if you could just speak and kind of inform us a little bit more about the fact that the Board of Ed is required to have a seat for every student. And as a parent with a senior who will never ride the bus this year, I don't even have the option to opt out and give the money back. So could you speak about that? It's Bill 5378.
Sure. So as Ms. Raccio is alluding to, or clearly stating, shall I say, is the fact that we as a school district, as well as every other school district in the state of Connecticut, is required to provide a seat for anybody who is eligible for a ride to school. And that, obviously, when you get to the high school level, and even sometimes at the middle school level, we don't necessarily have buses that are totally populated by our students at all times. So that could be, and again, you have to look at your routing, but it could be a way of saving funds if this bill is passed, where a school district could then look at its bus loads and determine whether or not capacity meets the need. In turn, that could reduce our transportation expenditures.
Thank you. One more. There's also another bill, number 737, and that is actually, it would allow the Board of Eds to establish a minimum and maintain a firm graduation date for seniors regardless of any cancellation days due to inclement weather and otherwise. And I bring this up from the budgetary ask. We do have project graduation, and we're very fortunate in Wallingford to have a lot of community sponsors as well as community members who donate their time for that event. And as, every time we have a snow day, all the contracts change, everything changes. And I know that that was the intent of bringing this up, to lock it in for seniors. Can you talk a little bit about project graduation and how we do it in Wallingford and how many students attend?
Sure. And Mr. Turner is really the key person to this, and I do want to give Mr. Turner and the staff at Youth and Social Services, I know I see some familiar faces who are usually there on that night, working with our students. That night, for project graduation, it is truly a community event that takes thousands of people hours to put together in terms of just coordinating the events, doing surveys to students to make sure that what we offer is something that they're going to want to go to, to keep them safe, to keep them in a position where they're not going and potentially getting themselves in harm's way. So the idea is that project graduation, after, upon completion of graduation, students are, with their parental permission and sign off, board buses. They're brought to Park and Recreation where there's a myriad of activities. Restaurants throughout the community donate amazing, amazing amount of food. No child could ever say, and if they ever said that they go home not having eaten, then they're, they might not have been at the right project of graduation because there is so much food that these students are eating and is available to them, basically donations from the school, from the community. The Board of Education has a small contribution that we pay towards tents. I believe it's just over $4,000 that we provide on an annual basis to provide those services. But it's a phenomenal opportunity. It's something that requires, as I said, a lot of hours of community service. If graduations could be set on Fridays, we tend to get more volunteers because parents who are staying up till 3 o'clock in the morning don't have to go to work the next day on a Saturday. It's much more challenging when it's midweek, but again, that's the circumstance. I would also have to say with this bill, I think there's another factor besides the financial issues and the donations. More at the center of this bill for me is the fact that, depending on how long a school year extends to, a student might have to make a choice between graduation or going to college orientation. At this time, unlike when I know I went to college, orientation occurred at the end of the summer, right before college started. Now, orientation is happening in June, sometimes as early as May, depending on where the student is going to. And if the student is going out of state, they might have to travel a day or two early in order to get there to be able to participate in orientation. As a result, students are making some difficult decisions. Fortunately for us, we have not had a situation at that, at this point, with that student having to make a decision, but we were really precariously close last year when we had the additional three days that could have potentially been added. That's a concern because the student's next step in his or her career is so meaningful, and making that initial connection, be it with your roommate or with other college students that are going to be in your dormitory or on your floor or in your major, is essential. So I know that's another component, and for me, that is the one that, obviously, as an educator, not that project graduation doesn't speak to me, but knowing that students are going to be able to make that successful transition is really important.
Thank you.
Mr. Chardulo.
Paul Chardulo, 2 Bayberry Drive. Mr. Menzo, linking back to what Mr. Gross commented on with regard to the demographics, you know, I think that, in my mind, we're kind of in an inflection point here in Wallingford and in Connecticut generally.
Absolutely.
Population stagnant in Connecticut. In fact, it's shrinking. And population is stagnant in Wallingford. When I moved here a few decades ago, Wallingford grew in that decade about 20%. The economy was booming. Everything was great. Today, that's flipped. We're stagnant, population. As I understand it, and I'm basing this off the audit reports, if you look at the last 10 years, the student population has declined... 10 years, the student population has declined by 13%. So, and I, I think we're at a point now where we, we really have to start thinking about, how can we reduce costs? The education budget over that last period, again, based on the audit, has been up about I don't think we can continue to do that and expect folks to accept that without taking some action. In some cases, people already taken action, they're leaving. So my question to you is, what are you thinking about in terms of driving costs down and not up? Instead of looking at tax increases, what can we do to reduce the cost of education through your creative thought process?
Sure.
Be interested in that.
Sure. First, if I can contextualize some things, because I think what also gets glossed over in those statistics is exactly who we're servicing in our community now versus 10 years ago. Our community, Wallingford, has changed drastically in terms of demographics in a good way. We have much more diversity, but with that, we also have some more opportunities for growth. I would refer you to our full budget presentation, which talks about our demographics in certain areas, one area of which is special education. While our demographics have gone down, our percentage of students with needing special services has increased. Over the last two years, 150 additional students need special education services in our district. With that comes additional cost because of their needs, and that's our responsibility under federal law, to make sure that we do that. In turn, we've had many more students move into district, not actually step into our schools, but move into district that needs services outside of our district. And that data is clearly delineated in our thoughtful document at the beginning of our budget presentation, which talks about the increased outplacement costs for students both in private and public facilities. One of the things, if I were king for the day, is we would probably put a cap on some of the services, not to students, but some of the costs that we could provide and let the businesses actually stop making as much money as they are off of our districts and our families, because it is very costly. In addition, we also have 43 languages spoken now in Wallingford. 10 years ago, we had just over 20 languages spoken in Wallingford. So additional services, again, continue to be provided. As you said, people, the population is decreasing, but a phenomenon that is beginning to occur in Wallingford is the transient population that occurs throughout a school year. We have over 700 students that either enter or exit our district on an annual basis. That's a phenomenal increase over the last 10 years, which brings to it some additional services that need to be provided, pre-provided for social and mental health matters. In terms of creative methods, we continue to practice lean strategies in our district. We're one of the only districts in the state of Connecticut that does that, so we still conduct Kaizen events. We still look at, looking at zero-based budgeting. We look at also asset analysis. We look at every staff member by cost center, by facility, and we identify where are they in terms of meeting the needs of students, where are they in terms of contact with the direct consumer, which is the students. So it's a very business-based model, as you're well aware. As a result, we have, that's how we were able to return $411,612 to the town council last year. We're continuing to scrutinize our accounts at this present time. We're not here tonight, nor will we be here at the end of the month crying or being in a position where we're going to rally the troops to get the town council to give back the money. Not that we're saying we don't need it, but we're going to take on that responsibility as we've done throughout my tenure here, and actually 10 years here in Wallingford. We've never done that. We've always made sure that we were able to live within the means that we were provided. What we've done in addition is we've looked at our consortium opportunities. We do have some guidelines that we have to follow. We have, we have taken every opportunity we can with consortiums that are permissible under the town charter, because there are some things in purchasing that we do have to evaluate a little differently because of the charter and also purchasing protocols in the town. But we do have collaborative opportunities for transportation. We have also, because I believe of the quality program that we offer in the district, we have many more students in our district than we did in the past from magnet schools. Right now, we have, at Wintergreen, next year, we're only going to have 35 students. When I arrived, we had over 60 students at Wintergreen. We have 17 students that will be at Thames. When I arrived, it was 21 students. So that has reduced cost to the district as well as the fact that it shows that our programming in district has increased. So there's a combination of things. There's the managerial aspect, looking at our services. We haven't replaced people who have been retiring in positions. We've reduced staffing in that area. We've continued to look at our bus routes. As was mentioned, busing is a big issue. We've looked at our instructional practices. We've written more competitive grants. We get almost 100% of the competitive grants that we're eligible for, because while our free reduced lunch rate has gone up now just over 30%, it's not at the number of 40%, which makes us truly eligible for federal and state funds at a different level. So that's a little bit of challenge, but we've sought out other grants that don't look at need-based services, and that's how we're integrating a variety of programming into our district that we're not putting in the budget. We also have our enterprise account because we continue to sell our curriculum nationally. As I had mentioned before, we use that to offset expenditures in the district as well. And that all runs through the Board of Education, town, and the town, so it's all, you know, obviously monitored from an auditing perspective. I think that the study for facilities for the high schools and the middle schools is essential. I think that was a good step. I think there's going to be a time where we probably need to look again at the elementary schools, because I think it's only natural if this trend continues, as you're suggesting, we need to be mindful of that. I think we need to get through the middle school, high school piece first, as I'm sure you could imagine, that's a big piece of our district. More than half of our population is there, but we do need to address that and move forward. So we're not sitting idle, that's for certain. Our staff is always thinking of trying to think of ways to reduce our expenditures. We are looking at a couple of alternatives right now that I can't share because they're not to be shared publicly just yet, but we're constantly investigating. Actually, today, we obviously must be doing something right because I received a phone call from another town in the state of Connecticut, hearing and suggesting that they wanted to talk to us because they heard the efficiency measures that Wallingford Public Schools have been putting in place over the last several years. So there are things. I think the other thing is as we continue to negotiate contracts with all of our unions, we need to be mindful of those contracts and take out some of, and we've done this, tried to investigate reducing some of the language that adds not only burden in the present, but burden in the future for the town. And I think we've done that with our seniority, excuse me, not seniority, with our severance, with our insurance, going to the high deductibles, looking at other areas. So it's a multifaceted approach that we're taking. We can't just look under one rock. We have to look under every rock in the garden.
Absolutely.
And we welcome ideas. You know, you've, you and I have had conversations before. If you have any additional ones, I'd be happy to grab a cup of coffee with you again and just
If I can just briefly interrupt you, I mean, I appreciate the, the education, if you will. I'm sure you're doing a lot of good things and I, and I appreciate that as a, as a member of the community. I guess the question becomes, does all of that translate into lower cost? That's really my basic question.
Yeah.
We can't afford, in the next 10 years, based on the demographics and the, the trajectory of the state of Connecticut, of which Wallingford is right smack dab in the middle of, of that, I don't think we can afford to increase our cost by 30% again. So, you know, I, I leave it up to you to figure out, you know, how to do that.
The one thing I would just state is that when the budget, before we even submitted a budget to the, to our Board of Education, when we did the rough numbers, like the mayor said, the total requests and then what he's able to put forth, our total requests were well over 3%. We knew that there was no way. So at that point, we made reductions. We also found other ways. That was where you get, really, that's where the hard work comes in at the initial stages. We presented to the board about a 2.9, we reduced it down to a 2.5. Now we have a 1.73. Each step of the road, there's, we're, we're looking for those reductions. You could ask our administrators.
Sure.
So we are, we understand that. I, I, my staff and this gentleman here, I, I give heart palpitations to because of the fact that I'm like, well, let's reduce that. You know, let's look at our trend. Let's look at our five-year analysis. Do we need that money? One of the worst things, and that's why we came so fervently last year to give back the 411, 612, was I don't want to pre-tax people on money that they don't need to have to pay taxes on. So that's something that we
I appreciate that.
And, and, well, because I don't live in, I live in a town where it doesn't seem to resonate with the people making the decisions. So our taxes, my taxes go up, and I know there's a lot of money that's not used.
Well, I, if I can comment, I think to your credit, if you look at the history of our, of our town's performance, the education budget is twice as large as general government, and it generally has a much smaller variance than general government. But there's still a variance.
Oh, there's still a variance.
And there's still leftover money.
I agree.
So I'll leave you with just two comments.
Sure.
You asked me what my suggestion is.
Yeah, no, I would appreciate it.
I'll, you don't even have to write it down, you can remember. One is that there's a lot of talk about going from two to one high schools. The only thing I would ask is that, as this is evaluated, and I'm sure you'll have a good committee looking at it and a lot of experts, when we end up with a proposal, if the single high school is more costly than the two high schools, then I believe we should simply stay with two, because we have a way of creating a project and it grows and grows. And before you know it, we have this huge project. And if it's not going to save us dollars, in particular in this environment, I say, don't do it, in my opinion. The last comment I'll make is, if I were going to look for, look at something within your education budget, even though I think you're doing a great job, education's doing a great job, just looking at the numbers, I wouldn't touch the teachers. I think the teachers are, have been going down proportionally to the student population, but I'd take a look at the overhead. I think there's too much overhead in our education.
Yeah, and I would just encourage, on the overhead piece, because I, I agree with that, I would just encourage, and I know we have a representative at the state level on the town council, is that they continue to look at repealing some of the statutory requirements of administrators, because the fact is, the amount of paperwork that our administrators and our central office staff have to do on a daily basis, it's inconscionable, the amount of work.
I'm not sure it's, again, when you talk overhead, there's high-level overhead and then there's lower-level overhead.
You're right.
You may be referring to, you know, administrators. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about higher-level positions. You have two assistant superintendents, I understand. I'm not advocating for one thing or another. There's an example of where you might look.
Yeah, and, and
You really need two assistant superintendents?
Absolutely. The amount of, the amount of time we put out in personnel matters alone, never mind teacher evaluation matters, and then your curriculum instruction, that's where I think that, again, and I respectfully say this to you and anyone else, is that, you know, growing up and when we were in school, we didn't know what necessarily everybody did in the organization. I know when I was in elementary school, Mrs. Top, God rest her soul, I just saw her as the person who was in the cafeteria, she was the principal. I didn't know all the other things she did. When I, you know, went to college, I never knew what the president did. I think that in our roles, in our education system, there are so many layers, we were just talking about this today, there are so many layers of responsibility that the roles that we have, believe me, if we had redundancy, they would be reduced. We don't have redundancy. We have reduced, we have combined roles.
Well, you know what? It may be time to take a look at the processes that you have in place.
That's what we've been doing through
And consolidate them or eliminate them. But in the end, we may have to just stop doing some of the things you're doing and prioritize that.
Yeah, I wish
And you got to reduce costs, is my message.
No, again, I wish we could eliminate some of the processes, but they're required by the state in order to get our entitlement funds. Even if they're cutting our ECS $500,000, we still have requirements. We have grants that we have to post. We have layers of accountability that, again, I don't think, again, the average, and I totally get it, that's not your role or anyone else's role.
No, but it, it's an issue, and maybe that's part of the state of Connecticut's problem.
We've been advocating, my, my administrative organization, as well as teachers' organizations, everyone, to cut the red tape. If we could cut some of that red tape, or, and I don't mean to be blasphemous, but if we were to regionalize some of the opportunities, we might be able to save some of this, some of this time, because there is a lot of redundancy. And I think that there's, there's a lot of information that, you know, we're required to give on a regular basis that requires hours. Never mind our commitment to our parents and our students. The response time for a parent has probably been cut in, at least in half, in the last two years, in terms of our need to respond quickly because of just the needs of our families. And that, most often, our days, if you talk to our, myself and my two assistant superintendents, we're not doing our job during the day, we're doing our jobs after hours, which we should, and on the weekends, because we're dealing with parent, and parent needs and parent concerns immediately, because we can't let them go even 12 hours. So maybe our customer service is too high. I don't want it to be, because I think we need to be high-level customer service. If we let that go, yes, maybe we can do away with other things, but our commitment is first and foremost, and I know you're not suggesting that.
No, and I'm, I hear everything you're saying. I empathize with that. I think our children are our greatest assets.
Absolutely.
But in the end, this is that inflection point I'm talking about. I really think we're there.
Yeah.
And eventually, if you don't do it proactively, it's going to be done reactively.
Correct.
And a lot of people are going to get hurt if that happens.
Understood.
Thanks.
One more question in the back.
Bill Comer for Broadview Drive. Forgive me if I've got the wrong department or entity. With the school buildings themselves in your budget, and I apologize, I didn't look at it.
It's all right.
Is there any allocation or allotment for a generator to run either of schools in case there's a natural emergency?
We do have generation capacity at Lyman Hall and the Ag Science, because that was part of that project. The other aspects, we've had conversations with town officials regarding that, so that's a different scenario. We don't have that in our budget. I know there were some grants that we were trying to procure, but, through the town, but that is outside, that piece was outside of our budget.
Okay, so understanding what you just stated.
I just want to check one thing for fact-check. Am I, I'm correct with what I just said? I have to go to the chief because he's my right-hand person when it comes to that, so I just wanted to make sure I was accurate.
Fair enough. So
Thank you.
Basically, the school applied for a grant or funding?
We didn't. The town applied for the grants.
On behalf of?
The town.
For the school.
Well, for the town, because it was under the auspices of shelter, for emergency shelter.
Emergency, right, so
Correct. So that wouldn't come from the school district, that would come from the town.
So it should have fallen potentially, because the grant didn't come available, then through another entity to potentially put that generator for in case of an emergency situation at one of the schools? Is that what I'm to believe?
Again, I, that's outside of my control, outside, I'm just in charge of the education department. That wouldn't come in my budget. I, I can't speak to where it would come.
But it's building maintenance too, isn't it? And there's subsection of your buildings?
But that would be beyond maintenance. A generator is not for maintenance purposes, it's for other auxiliary purposes. If the town were to come to us and they were, they wanted to have a conversation about adding generators, we'll entertain that conversation, but that has not been, I, I think we have, like we were just hearing, there's priorities. And I think that, that, again, I can only speak for our department, that has not been a topic, because, again, the buildings are used for emergency purposes with a variety of departments, and we, basically, when an emergency situation occurs, the town takes over the building. We step back because we don't have that responsibility. We open the cafeteria, we do whatever we have to do, but we step back because there are other services in control.
Okay, fair enough. So it just would be under a different department. Thank you very much.
All right, with that, if there's nothing else for education, I am going to go back through the role and call those departments for whom there were no questions. And while I will dismiss you, I would ask that you wait until I'm done calling the role before you get up and leave. I'm going to skip ahead to planning and zoning because they have a meeting. Any questions for planning and zoning? If you are here for planning and zoning, that meeting is in room 315. All right, back to the beginning. Animal control, the dog pound. You're dismissed. Board of Assessment appeals. Board of Ethics. Dismissed. Dismissed. Building department. Dismissed. Cafeteria. Capital appropriations reserve and force. No questions, but I don't think you're dismissed yet. Capital and nonrecurring fund. We have a change in status. Conservation commission. Dismissed. Contingency account. No questions, you're not going anywhere. Debt service. No questions. Economic development commission. One question. Electric division. No questions, dismissed. Emergency management and civil preparedness. Dismissed. Employee insurance and other benefits. Partially dismissed. Finance department. One question. Health department. Human resources and risk management. Dismissed. Inland wetlands. Dismissed. Insurance property and casualty. Now you're really dismissed. Law department. Dismissed. Library. Dismissed. Mayor's office, the budget for the mayor's office. Police department. Dismissed. Probate court. Dismissed. Program planning. Dismissed. Public utilities commission. Register our voters. Sewer division. Dismissed. Six-year capital. No questions. Town council. No questions, but we're not going anywhere. Town clerk. No questions. Utilities, electric water sewer. Dismissed. Veteran center. Dismissed. Youth and social services. Dismissed. Zoning board of appeals. Fuel crisis committee. Dismissed. Wallingford Center, Inc., and the Capitol Line. Literacy volunteers. Dismissed. Public celebrations committee. Dismissed. Quinnipiac River Watershed Association. Dismissed. Wallingford Transit Authority subsidy. Region Two Mental Health. All right, we get it. Wallingford Center, Inc., facade improvement program. I think that's all for WCI, dismissed. John J. Neardon RTC camp. Dismissed. Masters Manor. Dismissed. Is that, no, dismissed. Wallingford Committee on Aging. Dismissed. Wallingford Committee on Aging Bus Program. Dismissed. ARC, Q and of Meriden, Wallingford. Dismissed. Wallingford 2020 Committee. Dismissed. Historic program matching. Dismissed. SCOW. Dismissed. I think you all know, know whether you're staying or going, so I'm going to give us all a minute for the room to clear, and then the next department up. If I could have your attention, if you could carry your conversations into the hallway, that would allow us to continue the meeting. Thank you. The next department we're going to hear from is the Economic Development Commission. If you could please carry your conversations into the hallway, I'd be grateful, so we can continue the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Luke?
Chairman, two quick questions. Glad you guys went first, because I...
I know who you are, but if you could just identify yourself for the record, please.
You're good, thanks. Jared Liu, 59 Curtis Avenue. Sorry to keep you guys, I'm glad you came up first, so that, these are quick. Two questions. What percentage full-time equivalent is the one part-time member?
I believe it's 30 hours.
30 hours, all right, so it's three-quarters. And the 6,000 that's in here, highway sign enhancement, I just want to make sure, that's the billboard that I see on 91, right, between 15 and 14?
That's for the four billboards that we have.
How much do we pay for that billboard on...
We don't pay for the billboards.
That billboard on 91, 4x15?
We pay for, we pay for the maintenance.
Yeah.
And the sign change, the billboards were donated.
Okay.
And the, and the land is, is donated. We don't pay rent.
Where are the four billboards? I don't even know where the other three are.
Going on 90, 91 North, 91 South.
Just into the microphone a little bit more.
91 North whereabouts? I can't pick.
91, 91, 91 North is almost on the Meriden Line.
Yeah, all right.
Near, near the post office area, so you're going north. Coming south, it'd be south of 15, just on the right-hand side, obviously, it's going south. And 15, on Route 15, Wilbur, Wilbur Cross, it's over near Masonic, down where they have their offices, their main offices. So that would be going south. And then, we, we say it's going north, because you can see it going north, but it's actually on the south-by-side is the other one, which is over near the Sonic sign, and that's all, that's all donated, those are all donated. The only expenses we have with them is redoing the messaging, which is done every three to five years. We previously started with, and we still have some signs that we're working on power, and the utilities in the town, and the messaging now is location. Because of the way we are.
So I need, thanks, guys.
Thank you. That's how we do those.
All right, if there's nothing else. Gentlemen, thanks for your patience, you're dismissed.
Thank you.
Brad Sammis from 99 South Whittlesey Avenue.
Good evening.
My question is about the community pool. There's two things going on there. One is the ongoing use of the pool, the other is the talks about increasing things on-site at that park. So as far as the ongoing maintenance of the pool, can you talk a little bit about if you've ever done a cost-benefit analysis over, because it's, you know, short summer, there's costs to run the pool, there's liability insurance, have you ever looked at whether the demand is there in town to justify the, the costs that are being spent to operate the pool?
Well, part of our research in bringing and doing the heavy lifting to kind of determine where the pool has come and where we're going, and trying to keep it as a town asset, we're looking constantly at some of that stuff.
Well, as far as the cost, we have looked to, over the last few years, looked at possibly expanding it until Labor Day. We got some figures on that today from the person that does our chemicals for that. We're anticipating between $2,000 and $3,000 a week for chemicals, so that would be an additional $9,000, ballpark $9,000. Right now, it's about $67,000 to run the pool for about the 60 days, the season that we have.
I mean, the pool is limited with amenities, the pool is old, we recognize that we have to do something with it, so part of the concept and where we're going with this, a lot of those things are taken into consideration. For instance, making it a, more of a park instead of a pool, and making the property, getting more value out of the property instead of just the nine-and-a-half weeks that it's open now.
Yeah, and that leads me into the second part of the question, which was the, the, what I've heard about adding kind of a fitness exercise facility there. My question about that is, what was kind of the, was there anything more going into thinking about that? Like, was there any groundswell of demand for something like that, that caused that decision to be made? Or was it, like, how did that come, come about?
So, and we're the last year and a half, the committee, the pool committee and the Park and Rec Commission has taken field trips to many different municipal sites in Connecticut, just taking a look at what other towns that have outdoor pools are offering. Their season, night swimming, what other amenities are at that pool, the park, splash pad, playground, some have a fitness trail or a fitness circuit, so when we were trying to do the study, and last year when we brought it to the concept, these were just some of the criteria and the things that we wanted to make this site more attractive and appeal to different generations.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Park and Rec?
Paul Chardello, 2 Bayberry Drive. Just, just a comment, I mean, I think that the Park and Recs Department is, does a heck of a good job.
Thank you.
On balance.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that in terms of delivery and, and cost. Comment on the pool. I'm a big supporter of the community pool, but to whatever degree you can influence this thing, the one, the one thing about it that kind of caught my eye is, we went from the pool, my vision, refurb, refurbishing the pool, enhancing the area, et cetera, to a pretty substantial, whatever you want to call it, a park. I think we've got a swimming lanes in there, I saw the, the design over at the library. And, and I'm, I'm thinking about this in terms of the next five or 10 years, and the comment I made earlier about the demographics, and, I mean, we're not growing, we're shrinking. And I, I just think, to whatever degree you can, or the council can, we should try to trim the cost of that thing. And as an example, the, the swimming lanes, I would eliminate those, I don't know what that does to the cost, but I, I just think we should be able to do it a lot cheaper than what, the number I heard was four to six million dollars.
That was a range.
Yeah. Did that include the engineering or the design? Was that on top of the four to six? Because we just approved almost a million dollars.
The concept was about 5.2 million, and then the soft cost added on to that, so the range was 6 million. So the concept as it was spoken about and created with all the amenities that we're looking to put in, in the concept, not the new design, but the concept, was 5, 5.1 or 5.2 million.
Yeah. Well, I just think we should, if we can, trim that cost down, because I think it's a, I think it's a growing issue, and we'll talk about more of it in other departments, but somewhere along the line, we got to start scaling back. This is a new, this is something that, you know, we, we're taking an asset and we're restoring its value, which is great, but I don't think we have to, you know, expand it dramatically, my input, my view.
Any other questions for Parks and Recreation? All right, thank you very much, guys. We're going to loop back over to capital and nonrecurring and the fund.
The Camp Nonrecurring Fund, as I understand it, was a fund that was created initially at the, at the...
Mr. Chardello, again, just for the record, your name and address.
Sorry, Paul Chardello, 2 Bayberry Drive.
Thanks.
Now, am I directing this to the mayor, or...
There's a couple people here that are here for that, this topic.
Okay. And it was created by the state, and I guess we adopted it and created an ordinance, which ties into that. And it was, I think, it looks to me like it was intended to hold funds that were intended to pay for capital items that ordinarily would be bonded, which is okay. I mean, if you, you have a $10 million bond and you go out and you issue these bonds, you take the money, you sit it in the Cap Nonrecurring Fund, and then when you need to use it, you use it. If you have a project that you've allocated money to, and you finish it up and you save a half a million, you put that money in there. It also provided an opportunity, if you wish to, to tax the municipality for funds up to a certain amount, and put that money into the fund. My understanding of the way that was supposed to work was, you know, it was a year-by-year thing. We would, we'd decide that, look, we need, we want to, we want to go to the people and get $5 million. So we go through this process, you set the mill rate for their, for their run rate expenses, and then you have a separate vote, a one-time vote for one year, and so that people understand clearly what you're doing and can make an informed decision. Now, that's just my understanding. One of the things we do in Wallingford is every year, we take a couple of million dollars out of the general fund surplus, and we, we put it in the Cap Nonrecurring Fund. It's, I, it looks to me like it's, you know, it's in this, this budget. You know, if you look at the, there's a line item, capital nonrecurring. So what we're doing is, we're taking a, a nonrecurring expenditure and we're putting in the recurring budget. I don't know why we do that. Why, why do we do that? Why don't we just bond what we should bond? If you look at the state guidelines, it's, it's pretty clear. They define assets that are capital assets, buildings, system infrastructure, anything over $5,000 with it, which has a lifespan in excess of five years, should be bonded. Computer equipment, five years. Office equipment, five years. Vehicles, five years. We seem to go out of our way to take money to pay cash for these items, and I don't know why we do that. What's the benefit?
Does anybody want to take a crack at that?
I think you're miscategorizing what the cap and nonrecurring costs are for. It's primarily for infrastructure. That's how the town developed a six-year plan for infrastructure. Sometimes we do refer to it as a capital plan, so it might be a little bit of a misnomer, I understand that. But it's to, to provide for a, a funding mechanism to basically do streets, bridges, sidewalks, infrastructure. This goes back, as you said... This goes back, as you said, 1961, '62, or something like that, when there was an era of great discussion, I'll call it, between municipalities and any municipally-owned electric divisions over whether or not they can be taxed legally at the local level. I was not around in 1960, '61, '62. I don't know. I don't think, you probably weren't, or if you were.
I was alive, but I wasn't in Wallingford, yeah.
But then this is, a lot of this is just from some of my peers telling me these things over the years. As the state, what the, what towns were doing in Connecticut and elsewhere is they were putting money into their tax, taxable budget, their tax-funded budget, the general fund, we call it today, and they weren't spending it on the capital projects funded. So it became almost a multi-headed type of legal issue. Somewhere along the line, someone had an idea. Go talk to your municipal electric divisions, work something out. I don't think it ever went to court in the '60s or anything like that. So what came about was each of the municipalities that served, the municipalities, there, there was about eight or nine of them, I think there's down to four, including Wallingford Electric, was that to compromise basically, to say, okay, we will pay you something in lieu of tax, that's why we call it a pilot, and what the town does with it is up to the town. If I may, and I'm sorry getting a little bit long, but the city of Norwich has its own electric division.
Right.
And I don't know how they compute it, but they give between $7 million and $8 million a year to the town of, to the town of Norwich. They slap it in their general fund and it stays there. Norwich has some of the highest electric rates in New England, so I don't know how that's helping them economically development-wise or, or what. But anyway, Wallingford chose many years ago, and you're correct, to take it into the general fund because the charter says funds flow into the general fund.
Right.
But then, in the same budget document that's before the council and before you and everybody tonight, is there's also a corresponding expenditure, we call it a transfer out.
Right.
Because those funds come into the general fund, go out of the general fund into what we call the cap nonrecurring fund, it's a separate bookkeeping fund, to keep those funds from lapsing like they would in the general fund that was creating a lot of angst. And you hit the nail on the head, I think, because then, then the state got involved. This is going back, like I said, decades. So Wallingford, when that ordinance was written, said, okay, well, we're going to use this for basically capital infrastructure type of jobs and, and costs. And that's where it has been for, gosh, 50, 50 years or so. So the monies do come into the general fund and you see it in that document, absolutely, all right. But it also goes back out to fund that year one of the six-year.
Right.
Capital improvement, capital improvement plan. So why is it there? I mean, can we bond streets and roads? Yeah, you can.
Well, you buy other, other items too with it.
Well, yeah, well, it's, and it all differs on, on who you talk to.
Right.
I think the state, I don't know, if you pulled that definition of, of, of an asset from the state website or something, but good golly, I think the state's paying 14% of its budget on debt, and I don't want to be anywhere near there, so I, I hope you don't, and I mean this with all due respect to you, I don't want to do anything the state's doing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If you, if you, just give me just that little attitude to, to not, to not try to perform financially the way those folks have been for decades up there as well. But other than that, I mean, I, I, I think you have to find some type of other mechanism to fund some of the, the road work, the bridge work, the sidewalk work that, you know, the public works and the city engineer would, would want to tackle. And why do that if we have a funding source that provides us 1.8 million, up to 2 million, depending upon electric sales from the previous audited fiscal year, I believe, when we have that pool of money to do that? Because I, I, and I, I think I understood what you're saying, but you, we're bonding other things, but then we'd only be bonding this type of work. So where does it matter where we're bonding? You know what I mean?
Right.
So that's.
Well, the way I see this is, the electric division is, it's pilot money. We get pilot money from a number of places. It's recurring every year. And it, in the absence of just using it the way we're using it, it's actually driving taxes up because that $2 million that we're paying cash for infrastructure projects for could and should be bonded, and the taxpayer would be paying the interest only on that, on that bond. Now, if I have a choice between paying enough taxes to cover a $2 million project, paying cash versus just bonding it and paying the interest, obviously, it's beneficial to the taxpayer to pay the interest and do the bonding because that's, that's what it should go for.
But we'd, we'd pay back both principal and interest.
Okay.
I don't understand your.
Well, even if you combine those two, it's still a better deal for the taxpayer. All, all we're doing is, and we do this every year, so over 10 years, that's $20 million. But yeah, you would have $20 million.
We'd have $20 million in debt. We'd have $20 million in bonds to pay back.
That's correct.
So.
And that's okay. You're going to pay it back over a 20, 30-year period. I mean, the way I view that is, again, I don't want to go too far into this, I'm just bringing it up and saying, I don't believe that should be the case. Maybe we should revisit that policy because every time we do this transfer, we're tacking a hundred bucks onto the taxpayer. And I, I don't think that's right because it's bondable stuff. The last point is, we, we have almost no debt, and that's good on one hand, but if the only way we're achieving that is by overtaxing, that's not a good thing. Thank you.
Any other questions for cap nonrecurring? Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I, I have to agree with Mr. Chardillo because time value of money in the future is worth less than it is today, but that's one reason you would bond. But one question on page, number 83, the expenditures, it says capital outlay, almost 1.8 million, but it doesn't say what it's for. Do you know what it's going to be used for?
It's on the very next page, Mr. Gross.
Oh, those items. Thank you.
Yep.
See, I wasn't keeping you here, anyway.
That's why, that's why I stay.
Any other questions for cap nonrecurring? No? Thank you. All right, and we're going to loop back around to, we had a question for Public Works, but is Public Works here? Somebody here? I don't see anybody from Public Works. They may have left in the confusion of dismissals. Unless, Mayor, you want to hear the question first and see if you can answer it?
Yeah.
Okay. The Public Works.
Rob's still here, maybe the two of us can do it.
Okay. Whoever had the Public Works, Public Works question? Yep.
Who am I directing this question to? Pardon me?
Name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Bill Commerford, Broadview Drive.
Thanks. It's going to be to the mayor and I believe, Rob.
Okay. Based upon the, the Public Works budget page, 54, item 57665, it says Center Street Cemetery, $9,820. Can you reference what that money was, what it was used for?
Can you repeat the line item, Bill?
57665. It says $9,820, Center Street Cemetery. Actually, cemetery spelt wrong, but maybe Dr. Menzel could have commented on that.
I believe that was for some of the, the work that was being done where some of the walls showed some of the cracking. Because that's going back to, two fiscal years now.
Well, it's on, it's on the budget page, but, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, I thought that, that project went out to bid under something else, restoration of wall and it, to the tune of $60,000. So $60,000 is at 9820.
Could you, could you do me a favor? Before you leave tonight, can you just jot, or I've got something here, just jot down to your phone number and I'll make sure, if I don't get back to you tomorrow, I'll make sure someone from Public Works does.
Right.
So I had to check that because it's, it's going back a couple of years and I don't have two years. I've got 7,000 sheets here, but they're for the 1920 year. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. The other thing is, is several weeks, several weeks ago, I had asked Henry about looking at the municipal building down on 5860 Prince Street. And ironically enough, I ran across him today at the town hall and he stated that he did get a chance to look at it and he was happy with the condition of it. Because it was a concern of mine because it was funded through state money, state grants in excess of, I think, $275,000. I didn't know if there was any repair in his budget, and that's what I was questioning, but apparently there wouldn't be if he's happy with the condition of it. I had called up the mayor's office because I wanted to touch base with him, but apparently I had to put it in writing, so I'm live and in living color. So I'll just walk this over to him. The town council, the town clerk, excuse me, can have this copy. I just didn't know what we'd do as far as a follow-up if it in fact is not in this budget for repair. That's why I was looking at that 9820. So I can, I'll give this to the mayor, maybe we can get a reaction from him, and if he wants to share with you guys, I welcome that.
Bill? 203-91. 1938. Thank you.
In the cemetery committee, you guys are next. You just want to sit up here now and maybe answer any of these questions. Cemetery? You guys are next. I don't know if you have any answers or comments to his questions, but you can come up and, okay. You guys are next on the list anyway, so I figured, join the conversation.
I don't know that you guys have to answer that because that's, that's nothing to do with the Center Street Cemetery, I don't believe. I think it's a municipal building, but it was funded with the state taxpayers' money. So Mayor, do you have any comment on that? And is that, is the repairs, if it's necessary, in this budget?
Hi, this is the first I'm seeing what, what your question is. I'm not aware of any repairs being needed. It, it looks like it's dents in the side of the, the wall of the building. The building is leased to the Cemetery Association. It is a municipal building, but it is leased to the Cemetery Association. We entered into an agreement with them. But the nature of what those marks are on the side of the wall, I, I don't know without further investigation.
Okay. So by your stating that it's leased, they actually pay something?
I don't have the terms of the lease. Are you familiar, Bob, with the?
Not of him.
No, not. I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have a copy of it.
Just use the mic.
The use, the use of the building became, the use of the building became part of a renewed agreement regarding the Cemetery Association being in charge of the cemetery and their, their duties to perform the services necessary to have the cemetery overseen and administered in the proper manner.
I, I understand that, but you said leased, so I thought that there was some type of exchange of money. So getting back to the building itself, when you go down there, it looks like it was situated right next to a driving range on all four walls. And it's kind of appalling to know that collectively, between the taxpayers of the town and the state, it's upwards of $700,000. And I realize that Mr. McCully is retiring in several weeks. I brought it up, and the times I brought it up, he's been too busy. And then when I talked to him today, he's had, he's, and I wanted it for the record, he said he was satisfied with how it was and that so was Mr. Lazarus. This is his words, my opinion. And also, if there was any further questions, to reach out to Mr. Lazarus. So that's why I was concerned about the line item on it, number one. Number two, if that was accepted, seeing you're in charge of Mr. McCully, are, are you happy with those pictures and what you saw?
I'm not pleased if they're dents. Look, are they dents?
They're dense.
Okay, well, it's, it looks like someone was either throwing or, or hitting the wall with something. I'd have to assume that, but without further investigation, I don't know.
Or potentially the workmanship that whoever installed it didn't do it correctly. Because I happened to go by your police building, which is very similar, that was done by, I believe, the engineering department, which was, I thought, an exceptional job, a lot less expensive. They don't have that. But from my experience and my opinion, it looks like potentially the exterior siding was potentially not installed properly, causing that. So my concern is, is if that is the case, because again, I saw this 9820, I didn't know if that was budget item for repairs or how, as a taxpayer, not only of the town, but the state, what do we do? What do you are going to do as the main administrator to follow up to make sure that this is rectified? Because apparently, Mr. McCully is totally satisfied with it. That's why I was hoping that he would stay.
Well, I think the first thing I want to hear from is the Cemetery Association, given that they've had control, administer the cemetery from that building, and if they know of what has caused this or, or any more information with regard to it, and we'll take it from there. If it's not a structural issue, if it's totally cosmetic, that's one thing. Obviously, if it's a structural issue, that, that raises a lot of other questions.
How long ago were these pictures taken, Bill? The reason I'm, the reason I'm asking, I, I have been down there within the last week or so. And maybe the lighting was such, I just didn't notice it. I, I know there are a couple of issues with some of the framework around the, around, you know, the molding, if you will, around the doors. That gets pushed back into place occasionally. I was not aware and I have not seen, I have not noticed this. I'm not just, I'm not disputing your pictures. Please don't misunderstand me. But, you know, I will be down there in all likelihood tomorrow, you know, to take a look at it. I, I'm not, as I say, I'm not aware of it.
Those pictures are no more than two weeks old.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm not doubting that. That, I was just curious as to when, when they had been taken.
I also had pictures that were a year and a half old that reflect the same thing. That's why I thought that maybe there was some potential litigation with the contractor, maybe the architect, whoever signed off on it, and if it fell into the law department's hand, if it was a blind item in their budget for repairs. Again, the focus here is that it's not only taxpayers of the town, it's the state. So I imagine if anybody in the state saw that and knowing that the state gave the town to the cemetery $275,000, I don't know that that's acceptable. And I want to make sure before Mr. McCully retires that it gets addressed because God forbid whoever falls into that next role might get hit with this, this, this train or this, that's, that no one knows the answers to because he's leaving.
From the appearance of it, I'd have to assume it's vandalism, but.
It's not vandalism, Mayor.
Well, I've never seen construction of that type end up with depressions of that nature spotting the walls like chickenpox. I, I've never observed that anywhere, but, you know, we, we can take a look at it.
And without belaboring this, if it was vandalism, I think that the Cemetery Association, in my opinion, has many times potentially tried to secure funds through their insurance carrier or whatever for vandalism that was down at the cemetery, whether it be, albeit headstones, their equipment and so forth. If that was, if that was, and it was truly vandalism, then I would imagine they would have put a claim in. Or, better yet, I would imagine that they would have brought that information to our town insurance carrier and said, hey, this is what we got. But to have it sit there for idle for two years, I, I'm, I'm kind of skeptical. But either way, on behalf of the taxpayers of the town, as well as the state, I'd like it potentially rectified before Mr. McCully skates. it potentially rectified before Mr. McCully skates or rides off into the sunset. And are you going to make a commitment to follow up with this to find out what happened?
I need more information and we will proceed with it. Try to reach a conclusion.
Now, one of my other questions that I've been asking for probably at least a decade is, when it comes back to Public Works, is, and he's not, Mr. McCully's not here to answer any questions, unfortunately, probably to benefit him. With your projects that are done by Public Works, how is it monitored for budgeted versus actual? Based upon any year's budget, but we'll go by this year. So that hypothetically, say they're going to go pave something, or they decide, Public Works, that we're going to do it in-house as opposed to subcontracting. I imagine from speaking to other Department of Public Works directors, that they have a system, a computer system, actually, that says, okay, if we do it in-house with benefits and so forth, it's going to cost us $25 a square foot to pave versus if we subcontract it out, it might be $22 a square foot. What do we have as far as the Public Works goes as opposed to arbitrarily throwing a number at a project? And at the end of that project, at least me, coming up here for quite a few years, have never received a actual or a budget versus an actual. And is that based upon just numbers that Mr. McCully throws at it figuring it's going to be sufficient? Or is there actually something used to determine this?
Well, the budget is all estimates. When a project is actually initiated and then completed, there are bills associated with that exact project. That could be determined through the Public Works Department and the bills that the Finance Department pays. But the budget numbers necessarily are estimates at this point.
I understand that, but...
And so to true that up later on, certainly the Finance Department has a responsibility to assign expenditures to appropriate line items and keep track of whether a line item is being overspent or not. I mean typically, many construction lines, such as paving of roads, include several roads. So sums, as money is spent, it is identified as part of one project or another and ultimately it's booked that way.
I understand that, but you're missing the question. The question is, is a budget versus actual. If Henry budgets $500,000 to pave three roads, and then if that $500,000 actually went out to bid, it might cost the town, the taxpayers, $325,000. But there's nothing to compare it to because there has never been any type of comparison as to average man-hours, average, you know, whether you maintain a four, maintain a three. All these things are cumulative to the actual project. This goes back from whenever the Resident Transfer Disposal Center, I think it was called at the time, to this day, which is probably 10 years. I don't have that number. And through Freedom of Information, I sat up in your room upstairs, myself and another person, I gave up at 10,000 man-hours. I have it on a flash drive. 10,000 man-hours at Public Works, but to this day, there's nobody in this room that could tell me how much that project costs, including you.
Well, because the capital projects don't include labor. Labor is paid out of the salary line. So unless we go to an outside contractor, that would include the full cost. Otherwise, our labor comes out of a separate line. Now, could it be calculated? Yes, with a fair amount of effort to determine how many hours and what the wages were, you could ultimately true that up. But as the capital is budgeted, it does not include labor.
So it just goes back to my point that when a project comes up, Public Works has no idea, start to finish, how much these projects cost. So with his budget, he just throwing numbers at a project is what it boils down to. And he doesn't, in my opinion, there's a strong likelihood that because of that, no one really truly knows if it's cheaper to do it in-house or to subcontract it. It's just based upon where they are in the actual scheme of things for their annual projects. And again, one of the biggest expenditures of this Public Works was that resident transfer station. I would have thought that you, Mayor, as a top administrator, would have said, okay, well, we budgeted $5 million and it costs us $3 million. Well, we budgeted $5 and it costs us $7. We don't have the number. It's the biggest project. And me, as a taxpayer, I gave up at 10,000 man-hours, which is obscene, in my opinion. And that's why it bothers me, because when you take this budget and you arbitrarily throw numbers at it, and you can't come up with rhyme or reason how it happens, it's troublesome. Because I happen to agree with Mr. Chardello before even with the Board of Education, at some point, we can't fund these things. Or do we go outside and get somebody else to subcontract it because it's a heck of a lot cheaper? But without knowing those numbers, this budget is worthless, in my opinion. And unfortunately, Mr. McCully's not here to answer the question. But I'm glad that you will do follow-up with that. And are you going to reach out to me personally with this, or do I have to come back to a town council meeting?
Someone will be in touch with you.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else have any questions for Public Works before we move on to cemetery more officially this time? No? All right, Mr. Comfort?
Yeah, I had reached out to the mayor to get a copy of the Center Street Cemetery budget because in the past, in my opinion, a budget was supplied to the mayor even if there was no budget increase. If it was consistent, $69,000, $69,000, even over, say, five or 10 years, they've always submitted, in my opinion, submitted a budget as well as a detailed listing of their expenditures and what their goals were. I had asked a copy for the mayor. He didn't have one, as long as he got was a copy of a letter from Vice President, Mr. Beaumont, stating that it was just the same amount. So I also reached out to the mayor to ask him if he was going to request a copy of the budget. And it was indicated to me by Secretary Jones Stave that he had no interest in, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mayor, he had no interest because it was the same amount of money. So apparently, if you're a nonprofit, you can ask for the same amount of money and have no backup material. That's what bothers me. Whether it's this entity, Wallingford Center Inc., or any one of them, you can arbitrarily ask for, as long as it was the same amount last year, you'll get it. We won't ask any questions. Because several years ago, when Mr. Farrell was the president, they reduced their budget by 50%. There was an article in the paper where Mr. Farrell, Jerry Farrell Jr., stated that times are tough and we can get by. The town has been extremely, you know, financially generous with their funds to the cemetery, but you know what? It's now a time for us to step back and they gave half of that money back. I'm just curious, what changed? Because without having a budget, I didn't see any dispersion of money, how it went. Did they do any fundraising? You know, with their, you know, anything? And I wanted that to be able to ask some questions intelligently about this, and I don't have anything in my possession to do this. I know that, you know, councilors in the past had asked for it. And I think that anybody that comes in front of this body asking for my money, I should at least be able to get this. Maybe they brought it with them today.
No, we didn't bring it with us today, sir. The budget is not, you know, the budget is not completed, only because of the fact we don't know what we will get from the town directly.
We also changed the management of the cemetery. There was some turnover at the end of the year, so we're still working on it. But we asked for the same amount and we do run at a deficit this year.
You ran a deficit this past year?
We are, it projected we will run a deficit.
And for the record, Mr. Beaumont, I think that they've always given one in the past. It's, everything is projected and then Mr. Farrell stated in the past, we got the money from the town. But it was projection because I don't know if that holds water, because why did one come last year? Because what you're saying is, is if that's the case, we shouldn't have got one last year, but we did. We got one the year before, we got one the year before that, before that, before that, before that, but this is the first time.
Have you been provided with a budget every year? I would doubt it. I've been told I don't have, you know, I was, you know, I was told by the mayor's office it wasn't necessary to do so. Therefore, I didn't.
Okay, so you guys are coming to the town to ask for money, but you, there's no backup and that's good? We're all happy with that then? So you can ask for $200,000 and it's all good then?
Bill, you know that we're just asking for the same amount as last year. You know that there's operational costs to operate the cemetery. It provides a service and there was no increase whatsoever in it. And the mayor, because we had turnover there at the end of the year, management's turnover and so forth, that we didn't have to produce one as long as we were asking, we discussed it with the mayor's office, if we produced, asked for the same amount, that we would be okay. And it projected we're going to run at a deficit. And we'll probably possibly run at a deficit next year also at that number. We would like to ask for more money, to be honest with you.
Okay. How much did you raise last year for fundraising?
I wasn't, I don't know.
Mr. Beaumont?
I wasn't treasurer.
How much for fundraising?
Yeah.
Very minimal amount of money. I wouldn't say more than, I would say something less than $1,400.
Through fundraising? So that should show...
This is as far as, these are funds that came in that are, you know, donations, et cetera.
But I'm specific to fundraising, not donations.
That's not, that's not a specific fundraiser of any description whatsoever, to my knowledge. And I've been somewhat involved with the cemetery for a number of years, not to the extent that I am now as Vice President. That's only since January, when Bob and I took our positions at that point in time. But to my knowledge, we've never really done any fundraising down there.
Okay, because, God rest Ms. Riscotti's soul, but she had asked about that. She said, you know what? This is a concern. Rosemary Riscotti had asked about fundraising one time about, when you came up in front of the budget. So with that, I was just curious as to, since she brought it up back then, if there was anything that was done with that? Because there's some line items on here that I just don't get. For example, but if you don't have the budget in front of you, it's worthless for me to even ask the questions, but you're running a deficit. There was some talk before that I believe Mr. Govey had testified to about ground penetrating radar. You guys wanted ground penetrating radar done, but you couldn't afford it. Is that in this upcoming budget and how much is it?
Well, as I could say, there's been no discussion of it, as far as I know.
There has been not, there's been no discussion with regard to GPR at all.
So there hasn't been a discussion by saying, yes, you wanted to do it, but you couldn't afford it?
I said there has not been a discussion for it and I'm only basing this, sir, on, over the course of the last two and a half, or three and a half months of this year, which from that point in time on is when we became involved with this. And that's what I'm answering for, is for that period and that period only.
And you don't have any knowledge that it might even be this upcoming budget once you get your...
I have not put, I would not say that I have, you know, I would not anticipate that we were putting any money into the budget for ground penetrating radar. No, sir.
Because what behooves me is, the state archaeologists offered to come down and do this for free for the past three years. You offered to come down and do it for nothing. So as a cost-saving measure, myself as a taxpayer, I was just curious, I want to make sure it wasn't in that budget because they offered to come down for nothing, for free.
That's the first I've heard of that.
Yeah, because we've discussed the budget and that has not come up in our discussion. So you can be rest assured, it will not appear in the budget for next year.
Okay. So when could someone like myself get a copy of your new budget then?
Our budget is not a public document unless we give it to a public agency.
So you're not, you don't, you won't give it to anybody then?
It's not a public document.
Is that a yes or a no, Mr. Gross?
I said it's not a public document.
Okay, so me as a taxpayer that's virtually funding your organization isn't entitled to a budget? That's what I'm hearing.
It's not a public document.
Okay, so that's, okay. One other question. If the taxpayers of the town of Wallingford decide not to give you the $85,000 that you're asking for, can you guys exist on the funds that you have?
For a short period of time. We'd have to, we would have to do what other towns do or private cemeteries do and charge high fees for somebody to be buried there. Right now, we do not charge high fees to be buried there. We could make it work, but then somebody who wants to be buried there would be paying thousands of dollars for the plot.
It can always be made to work. And believe me, I know what it takes to go ahead and fund cemetery. I was treasurer of in memoriam for close to 20 years. And it's not inexpensive, I will grant you. Can we turn around and do it and do something similar to what they charge or what the Catholic cemetery has charged? Absolutely. That's always a possibility. Is it necessarily desirable from my perspective? No.
But from looking through the records of the amount of burials, some years you have five or six. And even if you charged $10,000, it doesn't equate to your $85,000. So you would have to hike up that fee substantially just to cover your operating costs. So again, the question, if the town said no or reduced it like they did in the past or you guys gave back, Mr. Farrell Jr., who I commend at the time, gave back 50% of what you guys asked for and you made it work, why can't we do the same thing now? Because maybe I can look at your budget, which I don't have, and apparently I'm never going to get a copy of it, even though you're asking me for my money. Maybe there's some fact in there that anybody can get. And my next question then is, is that if any one of the council asked for that document, would they be able to get that or no?
It's not a public document.
So it's not a public document, so then they wouldn't be the recipient of that. I think the mayor should take note of that, that we have an entity that's coming before us asking for substantial increases for quite a few years. Let me ask you this. You have one person that works down at the cemetery, correct?
We have, we have multiple, there is one.
Okay, one major person.
That's one major, and then we have a couple of part-timers.
Okay, did that person ever receive a bonus? And if they did, was it funded with the taxpayers' money?
To my knowledge, there've never been any bonuses involved, period.
Your knowledge has never been bonuses? Mr. Gross, same answer?
To my knowledge, my knowledge, there've never been any bonuses and that goes back a number of years.
I'm not involved in the budget till this year.
Okay. So the best of both of your knowledge, the Vice President and the President...
I'm not saying, I'm not... I assume on your line of questioning, it probably has happened or maybe has happened. I don't know of it.
So neither one of you know potentially if the taxpayers gave you the money to give to somebody as a potential bonus?
It's possible. Don't know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other questions for the Cemetery Commission Association? Thanks, guys. We go to the Fire Department? Thank you very much, guys.
Jean Luternal, 1098 Durham Road. Glad we saw you, chief. Okay, before we go to the future, we go to the past. Present budget year. Had a shortfall on the overtime line item. Shut down the rescue for a month. I would have thought you had a surplus on the normal payroll item. So questioning, could we have done a transfer maybe to keep the rescue online?
Sure, it's an option that we have. Most years, we do transfers with the support of the mayor and the council. They've been very good about moving money throughout payroll to cover payroll costs. It might not be in the right line of, in your explanation, you're absolutely right, that there's general wages available to move over to replacement pay. And we will in fact have to do that still. But the money, in our estimation, was not enough to cover the shortfall. Last year, we went beyond the payroll budget. We used everything in payroll, all the lines of it, and transferred money in from the operating budget. So that was the trend that we were on again this year. One of the other factors here is that we consistently have cut back on training because that same replacement pay covers overtime for all training costs. So that creates a safety issue for the membership, the members of the career department that need that training to do their job safely. So in order to maintain the level of training and cover the trucks, we expect that we would have exceeded the monies available. So you are correct that there is money that gets transferred.
So... Sir, just, I received a cue from the TV crew, just pull the mic, yep, or spin it a little to your right.
Short.
Sorry.
So I come to you tonight as a taxpayer and a resident and almost 30 years with the Florida Department previously, retired now, but it's pretty much the same since I was... I left. I haven't gone that long. So to the future budget, fire department, police, Public Works, I use Public Works also, you know, they all operate on, they know what their normal payroll is, but we're very susceptible to emergencies, overtime, and unexplained events. Public Works, I never, I never seen through all my years where the plows didn't operate on the streets when it snowed, because they went light on their overtime account. We always did a transfer, we always found money, we never went without. Same thing with police, you know, events happen, more, more police involved, it's always covered. So the public, when, when I was on the line, I had many conversations with the public when I was responding to calls, they really loved the ambulances and the rescue truck. Now, as far as the rescue truck goes, people think that, they show up on the medical calls, the chiefs know, they do everything. They go to all the fires, they go to the car accidents. They're very, you know, very lucrative. They go everywhere. Also, there's been times where I've been working the rescue truck back in the day, and I was first in on the fire. And I'm able to communicate what's going on at that fire, so that oncoming people and my bosses know. So the rescue, to me, is a very vital component to the town. And as the council representing all the taxpayers, you ask your constituents, and, and I think they'll agree with me, that it's a, it's a big piece. So I think it, it should be thoroughly funded, shortfall or not. You know, that's why we got a contingency fund. If not, maybe we should allocate more money in our replacement pay line item. And if there's a surplus, rolls back into the general fund. It's not like it's going to get wasted. I know people will say that they're overtaxed, but I think the town has grown to expect a certain level of response from the fire service and the medical service, just like Public Works, just like the police department. We need to fund these to what the people want. If they don't want it, that's a different animal. But we need, we need to, to cover those things. Also, you know, I'm going back what I've heard, and including newspaper articles, you know, the comment was made that we have a 12-man roster minimum to be on duty. And that's true. And that's been that way, way before there was a rescue. And we operate a second ambulance now, a lot of times. That was back when, before I was hired, even, we had 12, and we had dispatch. We lost dispatch, and we took our boss out of the ladder truck, and put him in his own vehicle, and he gave us two guys on an ambulance, and the other 10 were on three different apparatus, two fire trucks and a ladder truck. Now, we put the boss in a car, which makes sense, instead of him being the last one to get there, now usually he's first or second to get there. So time has evolved. You know, we've added the rescue truck pretty close to 20 years ago, right, chief?
Yep.
Chief Struble saw back then that he saw the need for it. If anything, our calls have accumulated, we do a lot more calls in 2019 than we did in 1990. So the volume, the workload, hasn't gone down. So we need to maintain. We've also had the other ambulance. Now, you add all those pieces up, it takes 16 guys to run those rigs. Our minimum manning is 12. You do the math, there's going to be overtime. Okay? So all I'm saying is, you know, in a nutshell, and just for one question, I had to bring you up, and I'm sorry, chief, but I think we shouldn't be pulling these things off the line. It's not like a light switch to go on and off. You know, the townspeople get surprised. You know, I, I even used to have to explain why our ambulance wasn't coming, and Hunter's was coming, because we can only do so many calls at a time. The town people expect Wallingford Fire to show up at their door. And if we don't have the rescue, if a fire truck comes, which has a paramedic on it, and if we get an EMT-level ambulance, we just lost that paramedic off of that fire truck to go to the hospital, and he might come back in an hour or more. Now there's two guys in that fire truck. And don't forget, we do fires. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Any other questions for the Fire Department? Mr. Morganstein?
Evening, Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. Thanks for your patience. This is a long night. Thank you for your service. My questions are also around concern about what happened with Rescue 3. I know when we've had past conversations with Chief Wright, they have like a formula with population as to how much they would like to have for staffing. Do you have a similar sort of thing in terms of what would be ideal for staffing? And are you anywhere near it for a population the size of Wallingford?
Yeah, there are a couple consensus standards, and we are very close to the, the numbers that are recommended. What it is, Wallingford is a transitioning community, where we had a volunteer component that was substantial in the fire department. It is still a factor, although diminished from what it was in the past years. But it is certainly a factor. And in that standard, there's an ISO rating that bases, your insurance ratings are based on, commercial and residential. And that's one number that has a matrix on our response capabilities, water supply, based on water division's effectiveness and whatnot. And then NFPA, so National Fire Protection Association, has two different standards, a 1710 and a 1720, that look at manpower and location, and timing that it takes to get to your scene. So those are some bases that we have. Unfortunately, the three of those don't look at things and come up with the same formula. It's not quite as clean as other disciplines. But it's certainly things that we look at, and the timeliness of the response staffing, our call volume is very different from daytime to nighttime, hence the, Mr. Letourneau explained, we staff heavier during the day, because we have more calls during the day. So with that, if you have consistent staffing, I won't say they're in excess at night, because they obviously need all the people you can get to work these scenes when you have them. But the prevalence of call volume during the day, we need to be staff heavier during the day.
Now, I know what the police chief, he said, they would like to be at 90 by that formula. They're in the mid-70s with the town adding maybe two officers potentially this time. So could you quantify, at this point, staffing, are you down-staffed? It sounds like there's two positions that are presently unfilled. Would there be use for positions beyond that at this point, to bring you up to full staff? Or how would you characterize that?
An interesting part of ours is we have shift strength, so that's what our overall number. We have 63, or we have funding for 63 positions. That is what creates the shift strength. So each shift, we run four different shifts. Our model of staffing is much different than law enforcement. So the way it works, we have the shift strength, either 16 or 15 firefighters per shift. And then our staffing, depending on day, nights, and weekend days, are all different. So it does have a translation into the previous questions. Monies that are available in the general wages cover the overtime, so there is a balancing act between strictly financially, what is the most effective, as well as all the other nuances of getting new employees, training, and all that. So we don't have the direct correlation. If we hire two people, it doesn't mean two people directly on the truck, more than we have now. So our staffing is 16 during the day, 12 at night, and 14 on the weekends. So if your shift strength is higher, you have more availability for people to be on shift. It doesn't directly correlate.
Now, how long have you been operating with those positions vacant?
I would estimate almost a year between the two of them. The vacancies came throughout the fiscal year, so it's not exactly a year each, but those two positions have opened up.
And we've had funding available, but we've not been able to fill those positions?
Right. We, we, there's a challenge with hiring paramedics, so we look for paramedic firefighters. So we're looking for timing for testing, because there's a very small, small pool of candidates within the paramedicine world. So they have to have graduated a program or be transferring from another job. And then to have somebody that has the aptitude or desire to be a firefighter and paramedic, it is a very finite skill, it's a tough skillset to find people that are capable of doing both those disciplines. It's a very high-end workforce, which is a compliment to them. So there is challenges in hiring. However, that is not the only reason why those vacancies are there. It's timing is part of it. And again, if you're just looking at dollars, because we staff heavier during the day, if we put people on shift, they're working days and nights, so there is no true cost savings to doing it. There's a certain amount of positions that can be open that is cost-neutral. So no, although, yes, we want to fill positions that are open, the finances are not the driving force behind that.
So again, I've not been a firefighter, but my understanding is, this is an occupation that is very stressful, it's very physical in nature, the beating that our people that serve take over time. What sort of cumulative effect does it have to be down some positions for over a year on the people that are serving now and have to go out? From what I understand, you've gone anywhere from like in the 4,000 for calls, to over 6,000 in a period of time. So the accumulated stress on present staffing and not having a full staff has got to be taking its toll. How long can we expect to maintain safety, not only for the community, but also for the people that are serving us?
Sure. The two positions, although they will make a difference in, in that scenario, it's not significant in that the same responders are going to the same amount of calls. So our medic unit covers predominantly medics, medical calls. However, they do go to other vehicle extracations, fire calls if they're available, and they're cross-trained, so there are firefighters. If they're not assigned to the ambulance, they may be on a fire piece. So generally, the same workforce is going to the same amount of calls. Downtime is important. Downtime means they're maintaining their equipment, their training, they're working on physical fitness, and it gives them some relief from the stresses that you just mentioned. So certainly more hands, you can shift some of that work to, to decompressing, if you will, while still serving the community. So it's a factor. It's certainly one of the things we look at.
Now, at this point, given that it was being funded through overtime, what have we done in the current budget to not be looking at a similar situation where we have to be paying overtime to be staffing this?
We are fully funded. To your point, we have the same level of funding, that's, that's what I've requested. And, and through the mayor's office, we are fully funded next year, within that same matrix. I can't speak to negotiations, but we are engaged in contract negotiations, and there are some strategies that are being discussed there, that I'm not at liberty to share tonight.
So I understand that you're asking for the same amount of money, because we ended up with a shortfall with the same amount of money last year, that took it out of service for over four weeks.
Right. In years past, we've had the same formula. And in past years, we've been able to make it to the, into the fiscal year. This year, we were able, or projected that we were not going to. And again, we've compromised some training events to cover the staffing. So that's one thing that I chose, was my decision, to take that vehicle off the road, to preserve the funding, so that we can get the training in that we needed.
Now, that must have been a very difficult decision for you to make this year. You had to weigh so many considerations. Now, in terms of making that decision, when you went to the mayor to talk to him about this, was there a specific amount that would have covered it, that you knew that would cover that if we were to get that request from the mayor and then from the town council?
I didn't have a specific number that I was asking for. This is a repeat, this was an issue in 2009, 2010, where we anticipated, our chief anticipated a shortfall, and that funding was not supported then. So it was more of a concept that I was asking to see if, if I should come up with an exact dollar amount. And the first question that was asked, and I answered that, is it a direct public safety issue? With all the things that you've mentioned, absolutely, those are all factors in it. One of the issues with fire services, you want to have apparatus not assigned to any work. You want to have some people in reserve able to respond to the next emergency. And during that downtime, those firefighters are doing all the things I mentioned. They're training, they're maintaining their equipment, their trucks, their personal protective equipment, studying, working out. They're doing other things, building inspections, pre-planning. So there's plenty of work for them to be doing while not assigned to an emergency incident. So when the rescue was taken off the road, what it affected was all those things. So the public was never at risk in that we had no apparatus to respond. That's certainly the number-one factor. We could have 15 trucks on the road, and there's going to be times when all 15 trucks are going to be busy. So one of the things we use is mutual aid. We work with Meriden, we're working with North Haven, we're working with other communities, so that when they're busy, we help them. When we're busy, they help us. Again, there's no total amount of vehicles and/or staff that's going to cover every incident, just not possible. So yes, it was a very stressful month, the four weeks. However, what it, again, what it affected was our ability to have preparations for responding. It didn't affect our, we didn't have calls, we didn't get to, and I didn't mean that in, in a sarcastic way when I answered that. It's, it's true that every call was gotten to in a timely manner, but what we did is, we reduced our ability to have vehicles available for the next call. So that's, that's, there's a fine matrix to having people waiting for the next call, and everybody hands working.
I guess what I go back to is that, and I think the gentleman who spoke before me addressed it, is that being somebody that does come to these meetings, I've seen department heads come and say, take Public Works, again, as an example, we got so much salt for the winter, we've been hit with so many little storms, it's depleted, and the mayor comes before the council, and the council considers it. And I've never seen them not fund that. I just can't imagine that if it wasn't approved in the past, why not still come with an amount and think, well, if I have an amount, it quantifies it to the mayor. And again, I think it's something that they should have considered, and also the mayor should have brought it to the council for consideration, because that's the way it normally works. Again, I know this was very difficult for you. This was not an easy decision in terms of your position between your men and their needs, and dealing with administrative cost and concerns, too. You're in the middle of that, trying to manage that. But as a member of the public, I know these things, we have to be cost-conscious, but I know how important it is, the stress that we put on public safety, to imagine that whatever the cost was, 20,000, 40,000, we do that, the council does that, the mayor requests it, any number of times. And again, we were very lucky that we weren't in a situation, or that your men weren't put in a position where maybe, again, it was one call too many for them at the level that they were staffed at. So again, I say this with concern and support, that I want to see you guys fully staffed, fully funded, and I'd really like to not see a repeat this year or any year, where you should have any hesitation to request in a shortfall, to go to the mayor, and hopefully for the mayor to respond with a specific number to ask the council. I just don't see why that shouldn't have happened, because it happens with other departments. And again, salting the roads is very important. They came just a few weeks ago for extra tree damage. They needed more funds for, I mean, we're talking about people using medical services in the middle of the night, which we used only a few weeks ago for my father in the middle of the night, we had an ambulance. These are things that I don't think we should be taking any chances with. So I'd like and hope that we're not seeing this again. You should be fully funded. For the amount of money we're probably talking, and I wish we knew a quantity, it should not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Fire Department? See none. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night. New pension next?
Well, he called Pension Fund.
He's sitting in the back. Is everybody going to come to the front, or we're just going to field it this way? I'm sorry, what was that?
What is it?
I couldn't hear you.
Which, which line, which line of which department?
Pensions.
Pension, pension.
We'll ask your question, and somebody will answer it.
Fire away. If I can answer it, I'll answer it.
Who am I? Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I looked at the Pension Fund today.
I looked at the pension fund today, and I had a question on, do we have an idea or a grasp of what we're paying in fees?
Right now, about 40 basis points is what our cost is.
And how are you deter, and the reason I ask that?
Between 30 and 40, depending on the investment.
The reason I ask that, because I looked at some of the funds that the pension fund's investing in, and they are 1.3, 1.4, 1.2, and it's a sizable chunk of it. So to get it down to 0.3 or 0.4 basis points, you have to have some zeros in there. Plus, are we paying any 12B1 fees?
I'd have to, I'd have to see for each fund.
Because some of-
I don't, I don't believe so, Bob, but I, I really hate to say no, but-
I went, I went looking-
I think not.
And I can't tell, because these funds that we're invested in have the opportunity to charge us 12B1 fees, which could be up to half a point, 0.5 on their own. They normally start at 0.25, and they go up to 0.5 on some of these funds. So-
Yeah, you're, I, I agree with you, some of those are a little bit more expensive, if you will, but they're in the, they're in the international equity realm versus some of the, some of the domestic ones are.
Well, we have some domestic ones that are R6 funds.
Yes.
So the R6 funds, which are, you know what class they are, so the R6s, they, because they don't have, because those are loaded funds, but because they're R-rated Rs, they don't charge loads, but they're entitled to charge the 12B1s. And that's, you know, we're talking hundreds of millions, over $100 million, right? So on a quarter percent or half percent, you're talking substantial dollars here. Question is, I know the, we've, people have been coming up here asking about indexing. If you go to Vanguard or Fidelity or any of the big boys, and I'm sure some of the smaller ones too, their fees are 0.04, 0.05 for the fund, not 0.3, and there is no 12B1s. There are no other fees involved. Do you realize what the spread would be if you're talking almost 1% on a fund over a 10-year period in costs, administrative costs? It's hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars on certain funds. And so, and, I know I've asked this before, but how many, and active funds, because what you're doing is you're primarily buying active funds. And for people who don't know, active funds means you have actually somebody who's sitting there trading funds, saying, we're not going to, we're going to dump Boeing because they had the incident, we're going to buy Airbus, or something of that nature, we're going to go somewhere else. Index funds buy an index, and the only time they change that is when a fund, when a stock falls out of the index, like General Electric falls out of an index because of whatever, stock price, whatever, and they have to buy the company that does it. That's the only time they trade, so that they can keep costs really low. Those are called passive funds. I think last year, according to Barron's, I don't have the exact number, it was high 80s, that passive funds beat all active traded funds. So why are this pension fund still have active funds for tens of millions of dollars?
We have both. We have diversification of management strategy. We do have those, couple of those, well, hold on now, you asked a question, please let me answer.
I'm going to grab the book while you're, I'm going to-
Ross, I'm going to ask you a whole bunch of questions about the Cemetery Association next year. I should, I should, I should have done that already. Part of me was tempted to-
That's fine, I would have answered whatever you had.
After three hours, you would have gotten tired.
No, I wouldn't.
We, we do, the pension commissioners are very, have provided a very, very diverse portfolio in assets as well as management style. I do agree with you. We, matter of fact, the pension plan owns a couple of those, or at least one or two of those funds that you had mentioned, very low-cost funds. But sort of the downside with indexing is, is when, when the markets take a real beating, indexing doesn't get you out fast enough. And in 2018, index funds lost 40, 42, 44%.
Just correct yourself, 2008, you said 18.
I'm sorry, 2008.
Correct yourself.
Thank you. See, I want to, I want to forget it happened anyway, right?
See, I'm listening.
So it did, I know. So we, and that takes a longer time to recover and a lot more taxpayer money once the actuaries, you know, bring that new market value into their equation to fund unfunded liabilities. So-
That's, that's not in fact true, though, because in eight, I don't know what the exact number was, they went, fell down the index versus active, and that's, you know, I'm sure the index still beats some of the actives. But in the last 10 years since the bottom low, not counting the last month or so, which the market's up greatly, the passive funds are up 18% per year on average, the S&amp;P. 18%. We don't see 18% in our active and passive are up 18. The actives are not that kind of numbers. So yes, you're going to take a hit a year or two, maybe, but in overall, you're in for the long haul, you're not in for the short haul. Active trading's very difficult to beat. That's why there's this company called Vanguard out there that has trillions of dollars in it, because they can beat the averages. And if people are smart, as Mr. Buffett is taking all his money when he dies, and in his will, it says it has to go to Vanguard for the S&amp;P 500 and the total return funds, because he knows that unless you have somebody of his caliber, you cannot beat the market. So what I'm saying is, we're paying over $8 million into the pension fund, we're losing money paying active fees, and I have a question on the fees. These funds, this, we have a management company, how do we pay them?
We pay them quarterly, fixed rate.
And who recommends the stocks that we get, or the mutual funds?
They'll take funds to the, to the commission.
They recommend them. Now, on some of these funds, if you look at them, even with Fidelity does it too, if they're brokerage account funds, which some of these are, they're entitled, now I don't know whether this particular company does it or not, they're entitled to what you would call a kickback from the, and you're nodding yes, they're entitled to a percentage of the money that we're putting in to the fund. It might be 0.15, it might be 0.10, but these are all fees that are hidden that could potentially be happening. And I'm not saying it is with this particular company, but it's a known industry practice. So again, why are we in these actively managed funds? We're not beating the averages. We're, it's costing over $8 million for the pension this year, we have the ability to do it ourselves, you have smart people on the pension fund that know how to do indexing, and any, pretty much any smart investor, that's what they do today, that's, there's more money in passive than there is in active. I'm just asking, why, or for the council, does the council have any say, I mean, we're losing millions of dollars this way.
Well, how do you know that? How do you know that an actively managed fund that we have in our portfolio-
You've got the numbers right here, that they're not beating the S&amp;P.
Okay, then what is, what have, what have we done for the last 10 years on the average, if you have that report? I don't have it in front of me.
I'd have to look, what page?
Last time I checked, we were at net of fees, almost eight, well, I believe it was 8%, and that took into account the hit in 2008. So if you average 8% per year, and you're also quoting numbers that are stock-driven only, we have about a 60% equity position in the portfolio, approximately 40% fixed income. So we're, we've been getting a net 8% per year annualized since, since and including, I'm pretty sure, the downfall of 2008. So that the results have been pretty good. That's actually, that's quite good, 8% per year.
Well, then, just take what I said a few moments earlier, I don't remember if it was Wall Street Journal, whatever one was, that in the last 10 years, based on their 10 years from, I don't know if it's the end of 18 or the beginning of 19, to now, S&amp;P index funds are averaging, again, 18% per year. That's 10 percentage points higher, and then you compound that every year. There's compounding. And that's what hurts also when you have these 12B1 fees, or these finder fees, or all these other stuff. So the money that's actually going in, I can, I have an illustration on that, that if you have a fund, you take a Vanguard, I did it out real quick, see if I can find it. Yes. On a $10,000, all right, on one of the funds you have, I can name it if you want, 10 years it'll cost you, on $10,000, it'll cost you $1,522 fee, where if you go to Vanguard, it's $95 over 10 years for the same $10,000. Multiply that times $1 million, 100 times the amount, then you figure out what you're getting there. Or even 10 times the amounts, it's 15,000, so it's hundreds of thousands of dollars just on one fund versus $95. So I mean, these are, these are real numbers. It's not like it's, if they were beating it, but you can't find a mutual fund that's actively managed except for a couple that have actively beaten the passive funds over a period of time. You'll find an active fund that will beat a passive fund here and there, but you won't find it long-term. And so, and that's what we're doing, we're, we're long-term investors. You're here, firefighters are here, Mr. Letourneau here is going to be alive for many, many years, we hope, right? You hope another 30 years or 40 years, I don't know how old he is. So we need to have that pension fund, and we need it long-term. And if we could get it based on investing for less cost, why aren't we doing it? And I hope the council took this to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the pension fund?
You know, I forgot, somebody reminded me, and I had on my notes here, you know, we are long-term investors. We're not the normal, we're a town. So normally, when you have investing in the market, you have a life expectancy.
Right.
I, I'm going to die, we're all going to die. So I'm sooner than later. But what happens is, and some are wishing I died sooner than later, but that's besides the point. But the point is, the town has, town's going to outlive us, or we hope it's going to outlive us, and we have obligations that are going to run much longer than the normal life expectancy. The 60-40 split is good for maybe people like myself and for yourself, but in municipality, we need to take the risk. We need to put more into equity, because what has done better in any 10-year period than equity? Nothing. That we invest in. I mean, we're not investing in gold, we're not investing in silver, we're not, you know, we're not investing in commodities. But between bonds and stocks, there's nothing more than equity. So we need to look at that distribution also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure. Jim Letourneau, 10-8 Durham wrote, on the pension, our fund balance approximately? Do you know?
I didn't hear your question.
Our fund balance?
I'm deaf, mostly deaf in one ear, so I apologize, but I, if you could speak up, I'd-
How much is in the pension fund?
That's about 200 million.
Okay.
Your pension is safe.
All right, yeah. Our, our, what's the word I want? What's the word I want? Our percentage, percentage of funding? You understand what I mean?
What did you ask?
Our percentage of funding? You know, they talk about towns are 50% funded, 70% funded.
We are, at the last actuarial review, which was as of 7/1, July 1, 2018, we are 77% funded.
77%. And the town's contribution for the next budget to the pension?
Uh, I think we're up, looks like a little more than $8 million. That's in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, 8 million in the general fund, I'm sorry, the utilities have their own budgets, but the general fund.
Paul Chardillo, Two Bayberry Drive, and a couple of questions. I'm looking at the 2018 pension performance from the audit. Who actually calculates the total pension liability? In other words, at the end of the year, someone calculates it based on X?
It's an actuarial computation.
The actuarial does that.
That's correct.
Okay. In looking at that calculation, there's some line items, I'd like to get an understanding of what they are. Like in 18, there was a pretty dramatic change. There was a, changes of assumptions, and that added 5.2 million to the pension liability. What was that? What were the changes?
I'd have to look it up, but I know we have been reducing our expected rate of return, like the industry has been doing for about a decade now. We've been reducing our, our expected rate of return from 8%. We are, the budget that the council and you folks are looking at, that we're looking at for 1920, it's down to 7.3%. We've been bringing it down about a 10th, you know, a 10th of a percent, 10 basis points a year to get it ultimately probably somewhere in the area of 7%, which is what the actuaries are recommending. So it could have been a change.
But you're not certain of that?
I'm not 100% certain, but if you wanted to give me a scream or remind, or leave me your phone number tonight, and I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Ready to go to sleep.
Yeah, there's also, there's also life expectancy changes that actuaries deal with life expectancy tables, and those change, I believe they modify them every five years.
Okay.
I don't know if that's-
There's another line item, service cost. What is that?
Service cost is what, what has accumulated that, for that year's service by the employees. Then there's a past-
They've accumulated a certain amount of pension accrual.
Are you talking the past service?
Okay. What about the interest? 18.7 million. What is that?
18.7 million dollars? That is in addition to reduce our unfunded liability, I believe, correct?
No, it's just, I'm looking at total pension liability, and what, what it does is it adds service costs, which was 6 million, to interest, which was 18 million, changes of assumption, 5 million, then there's another thing called experience, where it was minus a million, and they then algebraically add the payout, and they add all of that up.
Become what your unfunded liability?
And then they add it to the previous-
The interest is, is the anticipated interest on the assets in the fund.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I'm looking at this, personally, I, I think the fund had a gangbuster performance the last two years, the fund itself. You had a return of 7.6%, which was above the 7.4. Before that, you had 13.6 in 2017, which is pretty damn good.
Yeah, I wish I got that.
But as you know, you've got to look at it over a long period of time.
True.
But it still isn't that, it's not that bad. But my concern is that in spite of that, and in spite of the contributions, millions, we're still falling behind. We didn't put a dent in the liability. So I, you know, I think there's a problem in this pension fund. And, you know, if you look at the contribution that the town has been required to make, go back to '09, we were paying $3 million, and it's, it's gone parabolic. In 18, this, this last year, we paid $9,297. Now, am I correct in assuming that we're paying that because as long as we have a liability, we have to make that up? That five-year smoothing thing?
There's a portion of that-
Yeah.
-computation that goes for the unfunded, yes.
I consider, I call that a penalty contribution, because that's what it is. If we don't perform, as long as we're, we've got a liability, we got to put in more money. And the money we're putting in is gone parabolic. I don't see any change.
Well, you hit, you hit the word, I think you hit the word right on the head when you said the liability. The liability is continuing to grow.
Right.
As people's life expectancies have increased some. We also have a little bit of an older workforce that is accruing a, more of a benefit every year that they stay on. So that's the liability side of it. But that's, you're, you're correct, the assets are performing, I think, quite well, the commission thinks well. But, but the liability, the pension board has nothing to do with it.
But, but the liability, the pension board has nothing to do with that.
Yeah, the liability, though, is a...
Liability is, has been growing, that's correct.
It's a, it's a, it's a debt on the backs of the taxpayers.
There has been some, there has been some changes to the, to the pension benefits. Our personnel, our human resources director is here.
Sure.
So, but some of those, if you wanted to get into more details, Jim Hutt is obviously better to speak to at the night.
Yeah, I just, no, I don't need any more detail, I just try to make...
Some of those changes were, are gonna take some time to show some reduction of that, that, that liability.
But the growth in our contribution due to penalty contributions, based on the underperformance of the overall system, is parabolic. It went from, really, from 09 to 18, 180% increase. It's not gonna stop, as I see it. And I'll, I'll just kinda end by saying this. First of all, we have this parabolic penalty issue, which is driving our taxes, because we have to pay, pay that in taxes every year. The shortfall is still very high, $61 million. I believe, and I've said this in the past, that the pension is a problem. It's a growing problem. And I use the term ticking time bomb, fiscal time bomb. And I, I guess I'd like to ask you, do you agree that it's a problem, or are you satisfied that we're okay with, with, with the trends in here?
Well, I'd love to see the liability much lower. I think we'll get there, probably more in the longer term than...
Yeah, but Jim, we're paying $9 million in rising.
I know.
But that's my point.
Yeah.
If, if the trend continues, in 10 years, we're gonna be paying $25 million into the pension. It's just a fact, the numbers are here.
We recognize there's a problem, which is why we are negotiating what we call a cash balance plan, and encouraging that to be part of all of the pension contracts. Jim Hutt can speak better to that.
Right.
But, there's no doubt about it. It's, it's rising at a rate that...
Unsustainable.
Absolutely.
All right. At the pension meeting last year, I don't know who asked for it, the gentleman made that comment, and he, the way we've approached it is, it's a negotiation. And I don't know if it's the cash plan, first of all, I don't know if that's the best approach, my opinion only, but that's, that's fine. Is it a requirement for new people, or is it an option?
Any new person who came after, that the date when it was reached, the agreement was reached, would be, not have an option, they'd be in the cash...
Okay, so they're in that plan. The, the only problem with that is, and he used the term, he said it's gonna take a generation to, to transition this plan. I, I don't think we have a generation.
Who used, oh, the fellow from the pension board?
Pension person, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I don't just say...
Because what's happening is you have, you have this large workforce, that we're, we're currently paying out $15 million, and that's growing. So, that's, the way I see it is, the way the plan is designed, coupled with the payout that we currently are making, we can never get there from here. It's just gonna get bigger, and bigger, and bigger. I, I think it's a huge problem. And my last comment is on the design aspect. If I look at the, some of the assumptions, the actuarial assumptions, they're assuming an inflation rate of 2.75%. That's almost double what it actually has been the last year, or 10 years. So, that's adding to our pension liability.
That might mean payroll inflation.
Well, the thing is, whatever it is, it, it's driving up the pension liability. But what I'm saying is, the actual inflation is 1.5.
That's correct.
So, that is, that assumption is, is not right. The other thing is, on the salary increases, they use 3.3% to 11.8% is an, is an assumption, as part of the...
The calculation, yeah.
...design model. I, I just think there's some problems there. I don't know whether it's in the design, or a combination of the design and just the performance, but it's a big problem, and I hope that we'll be more aggressive than what we're doing right now, because I, I don't think that's fast enough. I think we're gonna, we're gonna continue to take a huge hit on the taxes.
Thank you. Any other pension questions? Seeing none, we'll go to Government TV.
For coming out. Yeah, I know, I said I'm waiting for him to come out. That's good. Hi. I was gonna make a joke, but I'm... Bob Gross, Long Hill Road.
For the record, Scott Hanley, manager of Government TV.
Two quick questions. I don't know in your budget, 'cause, didn't know if, in your budget, that there is the ability that you're gonna start to maybe, 'cause I saw you're getting new cameras, possibly? Are you gonna have the capability to livestream this to the citizens of Wallingford?
Sure you don't wanna talk about the pension?
I just, I just wonder, because technology is getting into that realm now, and there's more live, there's live streaming of everything now.
My first objective is to replace the cameras and make sure we're, we're, we're doing what we're doing now. We have no immediate plans to do that, to stream. It would not take a great deal to do that. The, the bulk of the expense is really what you see here, the production equipment.
Right, so when, I just wanna understand that, so you said there's really not much expense to stream it?
Correct.
Okay, so, can you quantitatively put a number on that, or, I mean, a range?
I can't really, I know that we already have some equipment that's capable of outputting the signal. It's, it's just a matter of having the infrastructure here, in this space, to do it.
So, that would mean that people could actually be watching this live, and any other activities that are, that you film here, or elsewhere, could be actually streamed to these homes, or on the internet, live?
Potentially.
I had another question, but I forgot what it was. Um, I'm getting old. It was on that, and on, anybody else have a question? One more, I don't remember. I'm gonna have to let you go, I don't remember what the other question was. Thank you. I don't remember what...
Everybody in the room is staring at you. No? All right. I don't know, we'll find out. All right.
It's all the pressure from the cemetery board.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Time, time expired.
Since, if you can possibly livestream, and it's relatively inexpensive, do you think that maybe, 'cause I see counselors on equipment in here, do you think that Wi-Fi, that this building could be Wi-Fi'd?
I'm not sure that's something that I can answer. I mean, certainly there's the, always the possibility of doing that. I think that that's something that a committee of the council had been addressing, so I'm not sure where that, that resides right now, with the council's committee, whether or not it's been brought to the mayor for a final decision, I'm not sure.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't know if you stream, then you'd have to have a router of some type here, or something, right?
You'd not necessarily have to have Wi-Fi in this space, we would have to have a connection in, in the production room.
Which is here?
Correct.
So, the Wi, the signal would reach us, out here, I mean, reach them?
Well, it could be isolated in that space, just to connect to the internet for production purposes. It doesn't necessarily mean there would be Wi-Fi in this space.
But there, but if there was, is that a major expense, minor expense? You're pretty...
Well, I don't believe it's a significant expense, no.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. And the last, Finance Department, any Finance Department questions? I wanted to break up, hearing from Mr. Bose, a little bit.
I like hearing from Mr. Bose.
Now we're back.
Or, yeah. All right. Jared Liu, 59 Curtis Avenue, and thank you to the mayor and Mr. Bose for putting this together. Love to see it regularly. So, I have a couple hypothetical questions. So, to the extent that you can answer, I'd appreciate it. So, Ashler Village doesn't pay on essentially the education portion of the budget. Can you estimate for me, what would the tax revenue be if Ashler Village were to pay on the full value?
Uh, let's see. Just give me a second, if you don't mind. Somewhere in the area of about 700, 700K.
I appreciate that.
And please give me a wide, wide latitude here.
Okay, I, I appreciate that.
Back of the napkin calculation.
Okay. Well, is, is there a conservative estimate? 600,000?
Is there a...
A more conservative, so, if, if you wanted me to...
If you wanted to say 600 to 700,000, I'm not gonna fight with you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. All right, other question is, also somewhat hypothetical, just, I like to have a sense of, how much does it cost the town in terms of personnel and infrastructure in order to be in the business of collecting people's taxes, right? So, if I were to take the full budget of the Finance Department, tax collector, assessor, et cetera, it's not gonna be quite a perfect estimate, because the department does more than that, so, you kind of get the idea of where I'm going, is essentially, what does it cost us to take in tax revenue?
Again, I'm, I'm just gonna do a back of the napkin, if you don't mind. The payroll between those two departments is probably about 800 and some odd thousand dollars. And the benefits, I, I would just throw maybe a 30% factor on the benefits, so make that 240,000. So, those folks there, and between those departments, it's a little over a million dollars between assessments, property assessments and tax collection. The tax collection also collects 98, 97% of our utility billings as well.
Okay, great, I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the Finance Department? Mr. Gross.
I'll ask it, 'cause it's the revenue side. Jared brought up the Ashler Village. I, I, Councilor Fishman's not here, but he's up at the state. There has been some talk of looking at some tax-exempt organizations about possibly changing the tax, how this tax structure's done. But, as a community, have we talked directly, one-on-one, with Ashler?
I don't believe so. I, not to my knowledge, but I don't...
The mayor's there.
I think that's probably the tax agreement you're talking about.
Yeah, the, the mayor would know better, I would think.
Talk about what?
Talk about that they have the abatement of not paying taxes on...
It's not an abatement.
Well, but they're not paying them.
But, and why? You know the reason. Why don't they pay those taxes?
Because you, the town, and they came to an agreement back in 1987, or, I don't know the exact year, that, that, to avoid litigation and potentially losing, or potentially winning...
That was a settlement of litigation.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Litigation was initiated, they claimed they weren't, weren't liable to pay any taxes. The town felt that they were obligated to pay taxes. It was ultimately resolved in the way we have. State law has changed since, but that doesn't change the terms of that settlement.
I, I understand that, and that...
But that was a lawsuit?
That wasn't my question. My question was, has the town approached them to discuss the agreement that was produced?
No.
And that would, and I'm just saying that because in all these years, we provide the town through our tax dollars, you know, as we was talking, a beautiful community, and if they might be receptive, as you see more and more not-for-profits paying a, like, in lieu of, or in kind payment to communities, as you can see, Quinnipiac has just paid to North Haven, you, you know my, uh, town manager, Frida, and, you know, and he picks up a nice check, and as, as Hamden does too, that maybe it's time to discuss this with maybe Ashler, and into a lesser degree, Cho. That these are two large entities that rely on services of the community, and as other communities are starting to see some of these entities make an in-kind payment, doesn't mean it's every year, but there's some type of payment, there should be a discussion.
What does state law say?
I'm not, there's a...
Yes, but Bob, that plays a role.
Quinnipiac doesn't have to pay it.
State law says they are tax exempt. Why does state law say they're a tax exempt? Because it is the policy, the public policy of the state of Connecticut, to encourage health services and educational services. To the extent that they are taxable, that increases the cost of those businesses providing those services. So, as a state position, state law, they don't wanna discourage them, they want to encourage them to be there. So, in effect, we're saying, we don't agree with the state law, that we need services that supply health and educational benefits to the community and all of the population. We want to tax them, because our revenue is more important than the service they provide at a lower rate, which means more people receive the benefit of their service. And put that way, I am not in agreement with changing the state law and saying that those who provide services of that nature shouldn't, shouldn't be able to do so at a lower cost. We don't really mind if they reduce the amount of their services, because now, by increasing the cost to the people who use their services, they're going to prevent additional people from getting those services. I don't think that's a good direction to go. Now, if the state changes its policy, that's a different question.
Never said to tax them, said to have a discussion with them. There's been other entities that have such, even Yale, and I'm not saying to give the numbers that Yale and Quinnipiac gives, but there is the ability for some of these entities to potentially say, hey, yeah, you're looking for somebody, you understand the times are tougher. Now, it's a different world than it was 20 years ago for a lot of these communities. You know, the hospitals are now taxed, so things are changing on how things are done in the state of Connecticut, and in other states.
That's right. The state of Connecticut is looking for any dime, any dollar, under anything possible, because they are overspending themselves. I think we need to look at cutting costs, rather than searching for revenue from organizations that provide educational and health services. It's the wrong direction to go.
Nobody's saying to tax them, I'm not saying that, I mean, what I'm saying is though you should have a discussion with them. There is the potential, as City of New Haven has discussions with Yale University, as the city of New Haven, uh, City of Hamden has discussions with Quinnipiac, as the town of North Haven's had discussions with Quinnipiac, that, and I'm sure if you go to other prep schools in the state, they've had, or private schools, they've had discussions with their communities, and it might be time just to sit down at the table and have a discussion. Thank you.
You're sure those discussions have taken place? I'm not sure they have, and once again, you have to ultimately look at state policy and the policy that we are asked to either abrogate or agree with.
I'm not, I can't, I'm not involved in those discussions, but something has had to transpire, because recently, when Leahy had left recently, and I think they just gave another check, the new president just gave a check to North Haven to first-electman Frida, and there's been a check to Kurt Lang from the city of, city of Hamden, that's from Quinnipiac, and Yale every year gives money to the city of New Haven. I don't think they do it in a vacuum, and they want it to be known. It normally makes front page of the Register, or one of the pages of the Register when they turn over those checks. So, it is public relations when they give those kinds of monies, and it's just for discussion purposes only.
I would also say, take... I would also say, take a look at what the tuitions are at these institutions, and how many people are disadvantaged by the fact you're paying 60, 70, 80,000 dollars a year to go to institutions of higher learning, placing debt on all of the students, or most of the students who go there. Is that a policy we want to pursue? Because it has an effect.
Many students at some of these schools, I'm sure not every student pays full tuition at Cho. I know that they have some type of thing called scholarships. Yale has the same type of thing. Quinnipiac has scholarships for students in need. Yes, tuition for the people who can afford it is very expensive. Fortunately, and there's a lot of people of means in this country that can afford to go to Yale, and there are a lot of people that can't afford to go to Yale, but get in, if they're deemed worthy, to get into Harvard, Yale, Dartmouth, whatever school. They can get into those.
I don't think we should be part of a process that helps to encourage higher and higher costs for education, and then all lament how people can't afford it any longer. We become part of that problem.
And I'm not, and how would that affect Ashler, then? Because that's not students.
That is a healthcare situation.
I'm not talking Masonic, I'm not talking, any of that portion. I'm talking the Ashler side of it.
It's a continuum of care for those who need that type of facility. So now we say, oh, we have an agreement with you, which we entered into good faith. You abandoned your lawsuit, we abandoned our lawsuit, and now, please, why don't you change that for us?
Okay.
I don't think that's a direction to go.
It happens, well, you do it with your union contracts. You want to negotiate something, you have a contract, and you say to the union, maybe I would like to change this.
Mr. Chairman, we've strayed way off the budget.
No, no, this is, no, this is budget. This is, this is, this is grants, and this is, what do you call those?
Probably-
Pilot programs. Because they do pay us something now.
Mr. Chairman, just in response to that, this is not like a union contract. A union contract has a term. It's one, two, three, four, five years, whatever. There is no term that I'm aware of on the settlement of a court case. That is the finality of the court case. Unless one of the institutions go out of business, that would end the agreement. But the two entities in this case are still functioning. There's no term on it. It's not the same at all.
But a court case can be retried, and it can go back for review, and it can be discussed again. You're saying, no, look at Roe v. Wade. That could be changed. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? No? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.